Uh, broadcast and live broadcast, so there'll be a few minutes when we're transitioning between the two. Don't ask me to mute you as we transition. Is there anything I have to do? Oh, you need to unmute yourself, so that you're all muted when you want to speak.
On-
And video, by the way.
Just for the Zoom?
Just for the Zoom or all the time? But do we need to unmute ourselves so that the people watching on Zoom can hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, not, no, not on, not, only if you're going to just be on the, uh-
Well, that's what I mean.
Where's the, where's the mute?
I thought all of it was going to be on Zoom.
By your name.
On the bottom on your left-hand side.
See, click on those box that you're in.
Yeah.
It's the start video.
We only use this if we get in.
Oh, yeah, do an audio, that's why you can't, that's why you can't unmute. Computer. Okay, that's because it was-
Can we just wear them through the entire thing?
Oh, yeah, as long as you can hear us speaking in the room with you. All right, if you'd want- Go ahead.
Now?
Yeah.
Good evening. Uh, before we begin, just a few minutes ago for our people that are in this by Zoom. If you want to, um, address the voice and don't you ask that you lift your hands and that request in the chat feature? And, uh, we will call on you as we, um, as we go down the list. Thank you.
So, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna call the meeting to order at seven, it's a little after seven. Um, we have all the board members here. This is the first time we've met in person, which is really nice to see everybody's bodies instead of just their disembodied heads on the, on the screens or, or their names on the phone lines. Um, and we wanna thank the members of the public and staff that are here tonight in person. I wanna thank ahead of time all the staff that worked to set this room up and set the technology up so that we could do this meeting and be as inclusive as possible. And I wanna ask everybody, um, who's participating, can you hear better now? Uh, I wanna ask everybody who's participating online and in person to please be patient because we're working out the technology. Um, we're trying to make sure we accommodate as many people as possible. Um, so what I'm gonna do is open up public comment first. And, um, what we wanna do is make sure that everybody who wants to speak-
Lynn, I'm noticing in the chatroom they're having difficulty hearing.
Yes.
So I'm not sure if you wanna do some tests to see if it helps.
They're not muted. She's not muted.
Folks at home, can you hear us now? Someone entered into the chat box, yes or no, or thumbs up or something?
Give a thumb, please give a thumbs up if you can hear on the screen, on the Zoom. Okay, I see a couple of thumbs up, okay. So it's really important that as many people as possible who are not speaking on Zoom are muted. Um, and, uh, we're gonna give, uh, the first testimony is gonna be from the public here. Or are we gonna go to, to, um, are we going back and forth between the public who are here and, and signed up and, and Zoom Janet? Or are we going?
We'll do the public in front, that's here now.
Okay. Okay. So we have members of the public who are here with us this evening who would like to speak. And the first person signed up, I don't have the list in front of me.
We have the teachers' union.
Uh, we have Randall Proz and Kathy Colton from the teachers' union here, or? Okay, and Kami.
Hi.
Hi, so you're gonna need to-
Yeah, they can have those two.
Speak into the microphone one at a time.
Wow, so, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, I got a microphone in hand and a hand sanitizing wipes in my other hand. So that when I hand this to my, one of my peers, I'll need to clean it off. Um, thank you for, my name's Randall Proz, I'm the president of the teachers' union. To my left is Kami Poirier, she's, Kami Nylund Poirier, my first vice president. And Dr. Colton, our secretary, to, to my right. Um, I wanted to come tonight, I, I'm really excited to see that we're in person for the first time in a long time. Um, I just left my classroom, which I was pleasantly surprised, the desks are all six feet apart and there's twelve desks in there. Um, but it's just the same way I left it, the same lesson is still on the wall. You know, it's just kind of a real sombering thing to see that, like, we just ran out of the school, you know, back in March and, and we're attempting to come back. So it's very, um, you know, sombering to be in there. Um, we've been working hard with Dr. Youngberg. I think tomorrow we're gonna meet again. I think that's four meetings in the last seven days, um, that the union has been advocating for a- Safe return, is that better?
I think you shut it off.
Can you hear me now?
Mm-hmm.
So, as you could tell, um, we're having a lot of challenges, me talking to a roomful of people with a microphone. So, you know, these are some of the challenges we're gonna face when we bring students back in the classroom. Um, I'm sure you saw the letter we sent where we expressed many of our concerns about the reopening. And, um, I must say, I wanna come back to work. I wanna see our students again. And I think I speak on behalf of all the Wyndham teachers that we wanna go back to work, but we wanna go back safely. Um, Dr. Youngberg and Neil have listened to us as we've been hashing things out, but we want a safe return. You know, some of the things that we've been advocating for are six feet in all the classrooms. Um, and I know that they're working really hard on that. I see a lot of things piled up in the hallways where they've been cleaning, um, rooms and trying to make space. Uh, we want personal protective gear and requirements for the staff and the students, we've been advocating for that. And cleaning stations and supplies to clean. And, uh, Dr. Youngberg has assured us that those things are in, in place. Um, one of the biggest holdups recently was a ventilation study. On June twenty-second, the state initiated a thing that said when we come back to school, we need to have ventilation studies to show that there's proper airflow throughout the classrooms throughout the school. From my understanding, that study was started this morning. So we haven't gotten the results from that. We don't know what we'll need to do, where the safest spaces are, where the best ventilation is and where the worst ventilation is. So we're very apprehensive and we would like that study returned and things fixed before we come back into the school for the safety of the children and the staff. Um, there's lots of debate on, on best instruction and best practices. Um, I know I'm learning a new term called synchronous learning where I'm gonna be on TV. I like being on TV, I'm, I'm a ham, I don't, I don't mind a camera, but I am concerned about how to do that. I've never taught a class full of kids in front of me and a group of kids at home simultaneously by myself. I'm not sure how I'm gonna watch what happens on the screen and watch the students in the class and best serve them. Um, we had a meeting with Dr. Youngberg the other day down in a kindergarten classroom at Natchogg. It was very nice of her to meet us there. And half of the executive board was online. And so my wife was one of them, Carolina was in person, we were in person. And the rest of the board, like, tonight was via Zoom. Um, I spoke to all of them, they couldn't hear most of what was said in the meeting. Um, they weren't, they were raising their hands and screaming to try to get people to pay attention to them. So it was quite a challenge for adults to run that in a room full of people sitting on the edge of their seat waiting to hear answers to our concerns. And, and they still, um, couldn't really be engaged like they wanted to be. So we have a lot to learn there. I'm not sure, I mean, I, I'll work on it, I'd like to master that. I, I think I'd be a lot better if I had someone with me to monitor the chat or to watch it online or teach it separately. The class in front of me at one point or online at the other time. I would like to give the most attention I can to students. Um, but I'm eager to learn the new technologies. I want to do the best I can. I've been teaching twenty-eight years and I gotta relearn my craft. So I think most of staff want to do that. Um, we recommend as a union, I'm sure you saw in the letter, we don't know if we're ready to go on September first. I mean, for me, if I mess up something in my instruction and a student misses a question on the SAT, that's one thing. Or if they miss a capped question, that's another. But if we mess up this reopening, we're gonna be like the colleges that opened up one week and shut down the next. Or we're gonna be like the schools down south that opened up and it was a disaster. I would like to see us get this down perfect before we bring students back into this building. I mean, I want it to run like clockwork. I wanna practice picking up my group of kids off the bus and I'll walk to the cafeteria. I wanna walk back, I wanna make sure that Dr. Colton's not headed my way when I'm headed her way with twenty kids. I wanna make it work like clockwork. I want it to work better than any football team I've ever coached. I mean, if I make a mistake, we get another down. You know, if we make a mistake here, bad things happen. I really want to get this down perfectly before we bring students back in the classroom. Um, we'd like you to look at the length of the school day to possibly do virtual in the afternoon, in person in the morning, or some way to do best instruction. We do want PD. I don't think that moving it back a week is a bad thing. It lets us practice that synchronous learning. Maybe I'll be the best webcam teacher you've ever seen in a couple of weeks. I'd like to teach to my peers and then they give me feedback. I would like that time to practice this technology and get it down. I think we have to hit this home run, we have to hit it running when we bring kids back so that we don't mess it up. I don't wanna be up there, the things turning off, they can't hear me. I wanna make sure that I get to practice this craft before I teach students. Um, I wanna learn the new technologies and the last thing. I would like to see the plan and practice the plan over and over again, over and over again. I wanna get it down perfect. This is not something we can mess up. Um, I would, another point I was gonna make was we had a real issue with trying to get our medically compromised staff accommodations by ADA. Some districts have been really, um, great about working with people with stage four cancer or other health issues that are on the state listed things that qualify for ADA to make those accommodations for our staff. We've been very frustrated with that because we had not heard anything, but an hour before this meeting, a lot of those accommodations came through. So I'm not gonna beat it, whatever it happened, it happened. And I would, I appreciate the district doing that. We've had teachers that have been here twenty years, thirty years, and they wanna continue to teach. And I do believe there will be positions for them to teach virtually in this climate. So, thanks for listening. Um, I look forward to going back to school. I'm glad to see your faces too. Hi, Mary, I've seen, I've seen you a lot online, um, at the high school building committee. I'm really excited. Um, do you guys wanna add anything?
Too late.
So much for health and safety, right?
Is it on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, we're down a teacher.
Kathy, would you like him to wipe it down?
No, it's fine.
But you should, okay.
But-
You, make sure you identify yourself so the people listening can know who it is. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Colton. I've been teaching here at the high school for a long time and been involved with the union for quite a long time. Um, and like many teachers in this nation, I have spent this summer thinking about what the fall would look like. We all know we had a less than ideal spring for so many reasons. Um, and I think we all wanna do better for our kids, by our kids, with our kids when we return to school. Um, so that has been really on my mind and doing it safely. Because if we can't feel safe in the spaces we inhabit, I don't know how I have the brain space to think about teaching. Right, if I am, am sort of so paralyzed with fear for my own well-being, there's, there's nothing left for anything else. So I think we really need to focus on getting our spaces ready to be inhabited safely. And as Randall said, part of that is policies and procedures. If we don't know what they are, it is very hard for us to not have anxiety around them. So this week we've had a lot of meetings. I think it, they've alleviated a lot of anxiety, but at the same time, they've raised new and different questions. And we need more time to kinda go through those cycles to iron out the kinks and feel like, yes, I know exactly what I will do when X, Y, or Z occurs. Can we predict all of it? Probably not. Can we predict a lot more than what we have going on right now and articulate things better? I think so, and I really would like us to have the opportunity to do that. Um, as Randall mentioned, we're deeply concerned about the teaching model, having us instruct, excuse me, students in front of us and students online at the same time. I have friends all over this nation, uh, because of consulting work I do, so they're already back in school in places that are not nearly as safety-conscious as we are, but many of them are in a hybrid model, so they've got kids in front of them, kids remotely. And they're already talking about the problems with kids being rude to each other in chat or bullying each other. It, it really, I don't have that much attention to manage a screen and manage a room at the same time. So we've seen other districts doing things differently where they're either assigning support staff to monitor the, uh, remote students or restructuring the school day so that there's live instruction in the morning, remote instruction in the afternoon. So we really would like more time to think about that and be certain that we're, um, giving our students the best possible instruction poss- available from day one because we lost so many kids in the spring. If we bring them back and don't do it well, I'm just so afraid that kids are gonna kinda drop out again, right? In the spring, at least, we had relationships already established and we could build on that and try to keep things going. And even then, it was hard. Um, and I just don't know, with a new cohort of kids in front of you or new kids that you may not have even met, if we don't do it well from day one, I think we're just compounding on problems that we already have, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Kami, would you like to speak also?
Yeah, very briefly. Practice is perfect.
FYI, uh, Ms. Poirier will be your, um, new union president as of nine-one.
Oh.
Nine years is enough and I will be here, still working on the executive board, but here for president.
Future. How many more days, Randall? Hi, my name is Kami Nyland Poirier. Um, and I know most of you in this room, I've known you for years as both a parent and a Wyndham parent and a teacher here. Um, I won't tell you how long I've been teaching here, but I just wanted to thank all of you in the room tonight because I know everyone here wants to make the best decision for our children. We've always done that here in Wyndham. We, in Wyndham, they're all our children, right, Katina? Um, I just worry that when we hear words like hybrid and we hear words like cohort, those are nice soft words. Hybrid means in-person. And when you talk about a cohort of children, the cohort is not those twelve children in front of me. The cohort is the entire school. The cohort is the entire family and friends, aunts and uncles who interact with those kids in that school. So in the media, we hear the word cohort and it sounds nice and friendly. So I just wanna alert people to what that really is, what it really looks like. We have a chance to do this right. We have a chance right now to do this right. We can't take back bad decisions. I'm afraid that there will be new meaning to the phrase hindsight is twenty-twenty. I don't want someone down the road to be saying that about us. Hindsight is twenty-twenty. We need to make the right decisions now for our children. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anybody else, uh, Janet, signed up to speak during public comment in this room before we move on?
I didn't sign up, I wouldn't mind speaking if it was time allowed.
Yes, yeah. I have to get the mic to you.
Very well.
What's that, thirty seconds?
No, no, no.
The wipes are supposed to sit for thirty seconds to be effective.
Oh.
To moisture out.
Hi, my name, we on? All right. So, uh, my name's Al Korzinski, I am a parent. Um, I think come this fall, we'll have four, four students in, um, in school, but there's seven kids home right now, just, just saying. Um, you know, I, I came today to, to offer my support for, um, you know, our, our Board of Ed who's, you know, trying doing what they're doing the best they can uh, under these times for central office. I'm imagining, you know, Dr. Youngberg and Neil are, um, you know, look at, if gray hairs, wrinkle, all that stuff, it's probably been happening, stress, sleepless nights. All those things, I, I imagine if I was in a, the education system right now, union members, um, it's probably pretty challenging to, to get up and go to work and know that you have, you know, a great responsibility, um, to get this thing off, get this thing started off right. So I'm not here to, to, um, to criticize, cuz I, I, I certainly have no idea, you know, where, where I would've started. But as a parent, um, you know, of, of, of a couple of kids who have graduated, you know, graduated from here, um, kids who are in school and just a citizen, I, of course, am concerned like anybody else. Um, I just wanna start with just on the, just the education piece of it. I am, you know, one of my big concerns, besides health, but just in terms of learning, is, you know, what we call the synchronized learning. Um, you know, Randy, you are a, you know, excellent public speaker, you are engaging. I imagine, you know, you could teach me about how to tie my shoe online and I'd probably pay attention, but I don't know that every teacher has that, that same ability. Um, and it's already going to be challenging. And I do hope that if there's, I assume there's gonna be plenty of PD maybe for you guys opening, if there's not enough, hopefully there's some added for that el- element because that is a challenging piece and you guys are looking to do something completely different. But if I can have the, listen, my wife here, I'm just saying my wife, Carolina Mendez Korzinski, I know is an excellent face-to-face teacher, but I don't know how great she will be at, how great she is at virtual teaching and learning. And maybe she doesn't know and I'm just hoping, I'm not saying she said anything, I'm just saying that, I better be careful here. Um, I'm just saying, you know, I hope there's gonna be enough PD around this skill set specifically because it is a skill set. Um, I am someone who, I work in the financial institution. We often have to do these things, you know, where we are doing virtual learning. And not every, uh, person teaching i- is, is the same, that's for certain. Um, so moving on to that, so hopefully, you know, there is P, there's plenty of PD and teachers know what they're gonna be doing around that. Um, because I think it's a concern, how are you going to engage with the students here? Um, you know, at, I'm just taking for the high school. I don't know that our laptops at the high school are Wi-Fi enabled, so, oh, they're getting new ones? Okay, never mind, so it sounds like that question's answered. Um, a, a question I have, you know, are lessons going to be recorded, uh, and archived so that our students are gonna have the opportunity? Someone misses out on something, who knows what happens, you know? I just listened to the other day about someone taking the bar and they lost power or lost electricity for some reason and right in the middle of it, that, they're kinda out of it. And I, those things are going to happen in our, in our kids' households. So, you know, you know, will lessons, um, be recorded and archived so that students can, can, can access it at any time and even parents if we wanna help out? Um, my other concern, and I, and I, I did listen to the replay, I did read the letters. Um, buses are always my concern. They all, they have been for the last three sons having to take them. Um, they're always overcrowded. I understand we're having, um, you know, it's gonna have half capacity, but I'm concerned of what I heard the other day about us not necessarily having bus monitors yet to, you know, make sure we're regulating if someone's coming on the bus with a, with a mask or not, um, if there actually is enough room. And I'm even still concerned that even at half capacity, if anyone has seen some of these buses, I can tell you my sons, to where they're literally cheek to cheek, my son won't take the bus if he has to bring his trumpet to school because there's literally no room. So I hope the bus monitoring is taken very, is taken very seriously. Uh, just a couple more minutes. Are teachers being paid hazard pay? And if not, I hope that's looked at. In almost every industry, that is a consideration. Now, I know this is a strapped, this is a difficult district and money is tight, but I hope that's been something that's been talked about. Um, and last thing, so I've been working, I'm what considered an essential worker, I work for a financial institution, a bank. So I've been working in this, in this since day one. Um, my financial center started off with eight people. Right now, the only one that's left in that financial center is me. Now, those folks who may have left, it may not, not necessarily that someone got sick, but our folks within banking, if someone had a concern about who they had at home, um, that they might bring the risk to, they had an opportunity to, to work from home. Um, probably the biggest thing that I've seen that I can, I wanna compliment on the, the company that I work for is the emotional support that was very much needed to me, for, for me as a professional and all the other professionals that I, that I work with. And I feel, and I know we're, we continue to talk about our students and of course I want the, the safety of our students to be number one, but if the emotional support is not there for our teachers and our staff, if we haven't taken a serious consideration of that, the amount of anxiety that they are going to have the first several weeks, maybe month, two months of just going to their classroom and doing their job, watching kids do what they do, if that isn't taken seriously, then in three months from now, four months from now, we're gonna be looking at half a staff of people who just can't come into work because they aren't sure that they aren't gonna bring home, they're not gonna get sick and they're gonna make everybody else in their household sick. It has been a really important piece of me being able to go to work and stay at work. And I feel like it's gonna be a really important piece for our teachers and staff as well, the emotional support. At the end of the day, if we lose half our staff, half our staffing, we're in a much worse position three months from now, two months from now than we are in right now. Again, I, I do wanna applaud all of you for, I, I know the hard work, um, that you guys have put in and, um, I, I wish all the success. I, my sons, my children are going to school. I have faith in our district, I have faith in all of you. That's it.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during public comment in this room? Okay, uh, so I'm gonna hand it over to you, Janet, to see, call on people.
We have one speaker on Zoom.
One speaker on-
Now?
Yes, we're ready now. If people wanna hear it, they need to put their headphones on. Sorry to other folks. Cassandra, we can't hear you, or is your- Can people hear her? Can people hear her? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Garvey, do unmute yourself, please. Thank you, Mr. Garvey, please go ahead.
Mr. Garvey?
My name's Ryan Garvey. I'm a parent of two kids at one of the local schools, who live right out of the Punch Street, Willoughby. Um, I'd like to say first off, thank you to the Board of Ed. Um, I know the last couple of months have been tough, um, and I appreciate everything you guys have done. Um, my insight is, um, there's no way there's a long answer to this. You're gonna, you're gonna show us the issue, you're gonna deal with it. We have residents as parents, as teachers, as staff. You have to learn to, like, the Board of Ed has chosen for us, yes, or you're making it, giving it back, but when you come down to that, we trust the Board of Ed, they've chosen for us. And with all their strength, I totally respect the teachers from one of the local schools, what you guys do to protect our kids, and hands down, probably the best, we're teachers in the state of Connecticut. I can't speak for anyone else, but I know the state, and again, what you guys do, you get great, well, what's going on right now with the students, I don't wanna forget about a whole, it is a huge, huge responsibility to get up before the time of the pandemic. And that is what we're capable of, we're on the case, teachers, you're positive, essential, but in what you're not, that you can't, that's essential, without the addition, there is no change of the country. Yes, it is a risk, you know, the change away, you provide your everyday education, but it's essential, I'm a sensible worker, I've been working since the most started, I have been teaching.
That teachers don't care about kids, but they only care about themselves is not to be cared about. So I just hope the board knows, I don't know one teacher who didn't think about their students. Um, that's, that's really heartening to me to hear that, because I guess there are people that are saying that. We really love our students, care about our students like our own, and um, I just hope the board doesn't have to take this.
Thank you.
Erin Strubing is next on the list, please unmute yourself.
Hi everyone, um, I've been given a publicist's certificate every three years and I've found that I'm going to be able to help. Um, this public health team has been saying, I think it's a little bit of a, um, like, like, it's incredible. Um, to myself, to people, um, and I believe that I mostly agree with them, these people are being very, um, um, we can heal all of them, um, I understand that we need to go back to where we're at, um, I think we need to be there. And the way we want to be through out what wants to be addressed is to be there entirely. Um, I think we all know that we have to be together so that we can see each other back to back in front of the head. On campus, or in mass, it's both of us, um, uh, we have friends who are outside. Um, I do all know them, and that's where they're at. And I've learned that people have to have everything in common, you know, to be hard to face it. You cannot, I can't do it if you're a parent, if I were a parent, I'd run, I'd plant you in a tree. Um, you can't do it if you're a parent, if you're a student, if you're a parent, but our goal is to raise kids, so that they're more comfortable. Um, we're going to have to go virtual, I do know that I had such a big, you know, for us to be virtual, very bad. Um, but I had a lot of students in the class, and maybe we know our students, we like to say they're good. There is that question that I'm aware of, it's been a while. Um, you know, I just wanted to say that we could hold a lot of comments, I'm very, I'm very, and then I would feel very, very, very. The law doesn't, because one of the best of the, you know, feelings, when, when you look like, you're like, there's this thing in the past, you know, having anything to do with that, you never want to have that on board, um, they don't, even if it's all for the sake of it, it's what it is, it's better than it is. Um, and I, I guess the only other part to say is that, um, you know, learning is kind of being taught here, and it's, uh, I'm kind of brought into my heart, that you can work through it all, but there's very difficult, but I'm working, and I think I'm going to work, I have to, kind of, whatever, I need to really use it.
Thank you.
That's the end of public comment.
Okay, thank you, everybody, um, and now we're gonna go on to the next item on the agenda, which is a status update on the reopening of schools. I'm gonna hand it over to Dr. Tracy Youngberg in a second, but as the Chair of the Board of Ed, I just wanna sort of frame up uh, this, this discussion and the purpose for this meeting, um, especially for the general public listening, um. I, I just wanna say that, um, uh, this is, this is very tough, and I wanna acknowledge uh, that we are dealing within a box of constraints that have been handed to us by the COVID pandemic itself and the state. And we, uh, there are things that we are required to do by the state, and, um, and it is our responsibility as a board and-
I'm sorry, they're saying they can't hear you.
Oh, I have to put my headphone back on, maybe. Um, I was saying for the, can you hear me now, uh, on the Zoom call? I was saying that, um, you know, we're dealing with, we're, we're dealing with a box. Um, we can, they're saying they can't hear me, um-
Yeah, they're, they're experiencing-
Yeah, I'm unmuted. Is there something else I should be doing? Yeah. Well, you guys could all start to watch, watch on YouTube now, that public comment is, is not happening, if you would like, then come back.
Is your mic on? Do we have both of them?
My mic, my mic is on.
What about your, your mic?
It does, I don't know. It's on. Can people on the Zoom call hear me now? Now it's, now we have to unmute it though, don't we? Okay. Don't, no, it says I'm muted up there.
There you go. Cut it out.
Can people hear me on the Zoom call now? Just put a thumbs up, okay. I, I was just saying before I hand it over to Dr. Tracy Youngberg, I thought it was very important that the board meet tonight in person. Uh, we haven't been able to meet together for months now, and it is very hard to talk about important things like this when we can't see each other's body language and we can't see each other's, at least partial faces. Um, I wanna acknowledge the difficulty of trying to do this in multiple mediums at the same time, but I think the points were well taken by the teachers, that this is a little bit of a preview of coming attractions for what people will have to be dealing with in classrooms. Um, I wanna say that we're working in a box here. Uh, there are constraints put on us by the COVID nineteen pandemic, which we have no power to change, except for by our, our best behaviors, and, um, good stewardship of public safety to the best of our ability. But we also have constraints put upon us by the state, and, and mand- you know, like, orders really from the state about the way in which we must comport ourselves, and only gives us a certain amount of options that we have to work within. Um, it is our bo- our job as the board not to delve too much into operational matters of the schools. Um, I had a long conversation with our attorney in preparation for this meeting, and it is clearly the superintendent and the staff's, and her staff's decision about how to implement the, uh, the cons- you know, the, the directives that come down from the state. It is the board's responsibility to be good stewards of whatever we decide to do to move forward. I thought it would be a good idea for us all to be in the room together today to hear directly from Dr. Youngberg, the teachers and the mem- members of the public that wanted to speak to us, um, and have a conversation as a board about whether or not there are any things that we can do to adjust the, uh, the path forward, um, but also keeping in mind that whatever decision we make, there probably gonna be thirty or forty percent of the people on any given day who are upset with that decision. I mean, there's almost no way in this scenario that we can please everybody. Um, and so I think we need to, you know, as elected officials, keep our eyes wide open about that, that there is not a perfect way to deal with this situation right now. Um, do- yeah, we're gonna use Zoom bombs right now.
Oh my goodness.
I think we may need to put it on mute.
Not only that.
Okay, thank you. Well, sorry to the public that was watching via Zoom, they can watch via YouTube now. Um, I'm sorry. Um, we can take off our headphones, please.
Well, that just made me say, I'm sorry.
Um, so I just want us to keep moving forward and have a discussion tonight. Uh, if there are members of the public watching this via YouTube or sitting in this room with us, um, we're not gonna take any action tonight, tonight is for listening and learning. Um, we could, at the end of our discussion, decide that we wanna take some action as a Board of Ed, and, um, I have put on the agenda a, a meeting for tomorrow evening via Zoom if we decide that we, um, are coming to come some consensus on something and we wanna take action, or we can wait and meet at another time. Uh, we also have a regular meeting scheduled for next Wednesday. So, given that, I just wanna hand it over to Tracy Youngberg and have her walk us through the presentation that she sent us this morning, and I know there's some additional information on that.
Sure, can I just verify, now that we've turned off Zoom, how they're going to view my presentation, just give me one second, okay?
Yeah, sure. Thank you. Uh, that's a, that's a good use of a cellphone during a meeting.
Thank you.
That's acceptable, huh?
That's a, that's a good use. Uh, so we're gonna try to figure this out, uh, we'll take, let's just break the meeting for five minutes while, while they try to figure out the technology.
That's probably a great, great idea.
Please don't go too far if you, if you're gonna get up.
So unshare it?
Yes, sure.
Since this isn't your laptop, it's doing the defaults, so monitor, yeah.
Oh, I saw what happened. I've heard of this, I've heard of this.
That was the first for me. I did notice something earlier that-
Really?
I thought it was somebody's avatar.
Yeah.
No.
My three things to bed, battery has not yet arrived.
No, now they say all the twenty-four. I just- From like TV. People make it better. I'm thinking about you, you're doing a lot of something away. This is a shame, but on the other- That looks like a dead horse. Yeah, but, yeah.
Just have to go. He was there. I'm getting down here, everything. They couldn't do too much. I was on a cane two weeks ago, I probably transferred from a cane. But I was, I was told I could. I supported him, I got him. I have to sleep all day. We're in the range there. I want to- I lost balance. I lost my balance, I still have micros outside. Outside, I was hitting on my car, I had to get first, I had to hit the car, it was like falling, I hit the car square on the mirror, and it was usually, I found, I fell to the ground, and I fall a little here, and we hit it, but I cracked it, it didn't work. But I have to work here, but the muscle, this is, yeah, this is the arm for most of the damage.
So-
I wanna get rid of this, it's like I should be able to do, it's mental problem, yeah, it's gonna fall, and, 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 I can walk, I can. It's just, it's just so much longer, this is-
We weren't carrying zoom.
Oh, right, okay.
So, and then are you done?
This one, I gotta go.
So you're working.
Guys, you're not being able to-
I'll always do the bathroom again, I'm sure I live to do it.
Okay, you're ready?
Okay.
I believe that it was. Yeah, well, they, they keep saying, no, they're not, they're getting more, more gent, I'm saying. I can see progress, but when I look back two weeks ago, I can see how they progressed. Muscle talk, right now it's all six feet, so, so, muscle here, muscle. You could think this was second, you could think this was second.
Again.
If I do it, if I do it again.
Hold up, I haven't started. Hand it to Zoom meeting. So, do we want to keep the screen open?
How are you?
Oh, yeah. Oh, so the Zoom meeting's still running?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have the presentation in front of us.
Is this still happening?
Okay.
Like, whatever that was? Did we, did you figure it out, we're online, Tracy?
So it sounds like they left Zoom open for people to make comments if they choose, and I'm going to be broadcast on YouTube, and you'll all be able to watch the presentation now in front of you.
Okay, okay. So, thank you. So we're turning it over to Dr. Tracy Youngberg, so-
How do I, can we watch it here?
So if you wanna watch it there, just open up a web browser, either, uh, Google Chrome or Microsoft Edge.
You also have it.
And just search for Wyndham Schools YouTube.
It's there, yeah, we have it in print. You have it in print in front of you.
What are we looking for, Wyndham, say it again?
Wyndham Schools.
Wyndham Schools.
Just close it down.
Yep, they'll have to watch it on YouTube.
We're gonna go primarily to YouTube and close down Zoom entirely, so.
Wyndham Schools.
And, and we all have it, a paper copy in front of us.
And, uh, can I see that? I think though, I think you're gonna be able to see my presentation on your laptops, I think that's what he's working on.
But why can't we just look at?
You certainly can, all right, we'll move it on, we'll get started. So the, the first thing I wanna do is acknowledge, um-
Yeah.
I wanna just appreciate the people who spoke tonight, I, I don't think there was anything said that I don't have, um, that I don't agree with to some extent. I feel like every, you know, human being is going through this pandemic right now, has fears for their health and safety and for the health and safety of their families. I know that ed- people don't go into education if they don't care about kids, so I, I totally understand where everyone's coming from, but it is absolutely true that we have, uh, some parameters around the decisions we can make. Um, and I'm, I am more than willing to work with our staff to try to come to some kind of resolution that's gonna make everyone feel better about the situation, but we do have to still follow the, the guidelines and the rules, the directives that have been set forth, so, but I do appreciate everyone who spoke tonight. So tonight, the goal is to bring you up to speed on our reopening, um, tell you where we are from each of our departments, and then provide an opportunity for us to talk about it, um, and obviously get to some of the points that, um, the teachers' union made, um, and have some discussions about what might be our next best steps. I wanna remind everyone, um, that the directive to open schools in person came first from the governor, then went to the Commissioner of Education, Dr. Miguel Cardona, and he then directed the superintendents to open schools in person. It was not a personal decision that I or anyone on this Board of Education made, um. I, I just want everyone to understand that, um, people listening at home, it is a directive from the State of Connecticut to open in person, and we'll go through the timeline as it all played out, um, but we weren't given the opportunity to open any other way, and we'll talk a little bit about why the state feels so confident about opening in person. So at the end of May, it was, uh, Governor Lamont mentioned that he believed we were gonna open in person, and then I believe in June he made the official announcement. Um, we had a, a district reopening committee that went through some PD between May and June. On June twenty-ninth was the day that we received the very large document from the State of Connecticut. Um, uh, this document, about fifty pages long with multiple links in it, was provided to all the school systems to develop a plan. We put out some surveys to our staff and families, uh, between July sixth and July twenty-first, worked on the district plan and our school-based plans, we gathered a group of teacher leaders at every building and had them work with the principals to develop the school plans. Um, we had multiple Zoom meetings with, we had multiple Zoom meetings with, uh, each of our bargaining units.
It's still going.
We're fine. Uh, I tried to, I have tried all along to keep everyone sort of up to speed, uh, the reality of this whole situation is that things literally change every single day, um, but I have tried, what I think I've done a decent job is at least letting people know that I don't have all the answers and that we're trying to be as flexible as possible, and that I'll keep them up to date as best I can. Um, that's not sometimes what people wanna hear, but it's the re- it's the truth of the situation. It literally changes every day, and it could change, what I'm telling you tonight could be false tomorrow, so we just have to keep that in mind, um. For example, all of the kids who have come back to campus at UConn, that situation could change what happens to us right here, we have no idea, so we're just, we're sort of playing along. On July twenty-second, which was the last time, I think we had a board meeting, um, I gave you the opening, the reopening plan on that night, and the next day we did our virtual town meetings for both the staff and the families. On July twenty-fourth, we submitted the district's plan, and we were asked, we were told in the, from the Commissioner of Education, that the plan should have three models, a full in-person model, a hybrid model, which is a combination of in-person and, uh, virtual learning, and a full virtual learning. We were told that the goal was to reopen in person. Uh, we were also asked to come up with the cost that it would, that we estimated we would need to reopen schools. Wyndham estimated it would need about three point four million dollars to do the things in the guidelines. The guidelines are pretty clear about the things they expect school systems to have in place. On July thirty-first, the Commissioner of Education gave the superintendents the ability to choose the reopening model with a clear understanding that the goal was to reopen in person. He basically said, you can choose your model, full in-person or hybrid, you decide. At that point in time, I had received lots of feedback that people were most concerned about social distancing and our ability to keep people safe in the buildings. So in my mind, the hybrid model allows us to actually get everyone six feet apart. We are not able to do that when we, if we all, if all the kids came back to school, that would not happen. So, in Randall's opening remarks, he referenced the high school classrooms having twelve desks and them all being six feet apart. That is true of all of our classrooms across the district, the hybrid model allows us to reach the six-foot social distancing. On August fourth, um, the superintendents were asked to complete a survey for the State Department of Ed. In that survey, we had to tell them what we chose as our reopening model, and we had to give them the date that we were going to open fully in person if we choo- chose hybrid. They wanted us to make that date within four weeks. I pushed it back a little further than four weeks, because we're saying that we're gonna go back full in person by October fourteenth. That's about five and a half, six weeks from, from our opening September first. On Friday, the families received, or we mailed out the cohort letters. Thank you to Mr. Weathers for working hard, and for the principals for working hard on getting those cohorts set up. Um, we used, we started the process by looking at our high school kids first, and then connecting all of the kids in the district to the high school kids. If you're related or you're living in a household, we built this system around the high school because the high school schedule couldn't be changed, or it would have an impact much greater than changing the middle school or the elementary kids. So Mr. Weathers helped us create the cohorts, and the principals picked it up from the, from the list he created, and we mailed those out Friday. We are also very much aware that the US Postal Service is not right now working in an efficient manner, so we've given families a message that if they didn't get their cohorts to please call their schools, if you didn't get a letter at home already telling you what day your kid is tending school, please call your school, and they will tell you whether your child is in Cohort A or Cohort B. And again, we're working really hard to make sure all the students in a common household are going to school on the same day or not going to school on the same day. Right now, every one of our families has the opportunity to fill out a survey where they're committing themselves to either have their children return in person or to access learning completely virtually. And I'm gonna show you the results we have so far. I want everyone at home, if you haven't filled out your survey, please take a couple minutes and fill out that survey. We cannot plan, we can only make assumptions if you don't tell us who's actually coming. We know we're not gonna have more than fifty percent of the kids in the school, 'cause that's how we set up the hybrid, but we would like to know who those kids are. So if you could please, families at home, fill out those surveys, we really need the information. Friday is the deadline, we'd love to hit the total number of families before Friday, that would be great. Um, just so everyone knows, we have a little over th- uh, thirty-three hundred kids in the district and about twenty-four hundred common households. I'm gonna show you the results of where we are with the survey in just a minute, you'll see we're not close to where we need to be to actually understand what's going on. The, um, at the, at the bottom of the screen I'm looking at right now is a message about the addendums. There have been seven addendums so far to this fifty-page plan. They come out every few days, the state's working really hard to try to think about all the things that they, they didn't think about when they created the initial plan. It's not their fault, there's no playbook, this is all being built as it goes. And everybody's district has different nuances that impact the decisions they make. So when we reference other districts and say, well, in this district, they did it this way, there are a hundred different working parts that allow people to do things in a different way. Like, one of the things that we're gonna talk about tomorrow is that the West Hartford School System has more days on their calendar than Wyndham has. So their instructional hours aren't built the same way ours are, so when we're talking about adjusting the instructional day, they have a different set of parameters than we have. So it's not all apples to apples, and we're gonna talk about that when we meet tomorrow, so everyone understands. As I mentioned-
When you say when we meet tomorrow, you're looking at Randall and you're saying, you're saying, meeting with the teachers.
Correct, I'm sorry, yes, we're, we're meeting again.
Just wanna make sure people-
Via Zoom, hopefully it'll be safe, we'll, we'll figure that out tomorrow. So, we're gonna just reiterate, the district's priorities have and always will be the health and safety of students and staff first, the social, emotional wellbeing of students and staff, and then academic achievement. And I know, this is a school system, our, our main focus is supposed to be academic achievement, but it can't be that right now, so- So we're starting off with health and safety, social, emotional wellbeing, and then academics. I want to remind everyone that in the guidelines, um, adapt, advance, and achieve, they mention multiple mitigation strategies. It's not any one of them, it's the mask, it's the social distancing, it's the washing of hands, the hand sanitizing. It's the one-way traffic, it's the rearranging classrooms, it's all of the things in the, in the plan. It's not any one of them, it's all of them together, that's what we've been told, that's what the scientists are saying to us, that's what the, the consultants at the, at the state level are saying to us. So we're gonna try to do as many of the things they mention in the guidelines as we can, 'cause we don't want anybody to get sick. Nobody wants anybody to get sick. I also, um, I want to just reiterate, in the guidelines, it actually says, "Six feet social distancing, where feasible." I want to make that clear, we've reached the six-foot goal in our classrooms, but it does say in the guidelines, "Where feasible." And I also want to let everybody know, it also talks about the fact that the American Academy of Pediatrics suggests a three-foot social distancing be more appropriate. So somewhere between three and six feet is where we need to land, we've met the six-foot goal, at least during the hybrid. We're not gonna have six-foot social distancing if we come back fully in person, it's not gonna happen. I just want everyone to understand that, that's where we are right now. And please feel free to ask questions, jump in, get clarification, yeah.
Would we have, uh, three feet, social distance if we came back?
If every single student showed up, we'd be some, we'd land somewhere around three and a half to four feet. And it's, every classroom's a different size, you know, there's like groups of classroom sizes, but our principals have walked through all their rooms to try to figure out. We'd, we'd land somewhere around three and a half, four feet. Yes.
So, so for October, everybody's gonna be back in school, that is the goal.
That's the goal, assuming the state metrics stays where it's supposed to be, that is the goal, to come back fully in person. So Wyndham's hybrid model, and I'm, we're more than willing to have a conversation about how we might make this hybrid model better. The state has asked us to come up with a model that has about fifty percent synchronous learning, meaning synchronous learning means that it's happening in real time. The kids at home have access to their teachers live. Um, asynchronous learning means that they can access that learning at a different time, it doesn't have to happen in real time, so we're trying to find a balance. It is definitely brand new, I'm not gonna argue, not only is it brand new for the teachers, it's brand new for our kids. It's gonna be a totally different focus, um, it's very different, and there's a ton of things that we haven't even figured out yet, 'cause we haven't tried it. I mean, I had Mr. Weathers teach a lesson to all the, the leaders at our Leadership in- Institute, and we played it out. We had a group of leaders in front of him in the classroom, and a g- group of leaders in the Barrows Gymnasium. And we played it out as if we were the kids at home and the kids at school. And there were some issues, there was some background noise we had to work out, we noticed where he could walk in the webcam and be out of sight. We noticed that the screen that the webcam was focused on didn't necessarily, wasn't necessarily large enough for everyone to see. All these things, we said, "Wow, we're really gonna have to work on these things," but we tried it out, and that's what I'm imagining is going to happen when we come back to school. Nobody is expecting this to, to be perfect.
Uh, Tracy, are you imagining that some of that would be happening during professional development?
They're, they're absolutely gonna have an opportunity to practice, but-
Because it seems to me that's the logical time for the teachers at least to be, try to become more conversant in it.
I already told Neil, he'll probably be teaching the same kind of lesson to the teachers as he did to the leaders, absolutely, he's ready, he's ready.
Well, he's only one person though.
No, but you can, we could broadcast one lesson for Neil to everyone at the same time. That's what's sort of amazing about technology, as scary as it is, it's also a really cool thing to have. And Wyndham, for the first time, has the ability to have, to go one-to-one devices, we have not had that. We haven't done professional development, like a district that has access to one-to-one devices. We have not taught our classroom, had our classrooms set up like that kind of district. We haven't been that kind of district, we haven't put money in our technology budget in I don't know how many years. Right, so we're in a, we're in a really neat place if we can get past all the health and safety stuff that comes along with being in a pandemic. There's some really exciting instructional things that are gonna happen, but it's scary right now, and I, I totally get it. And, and I'm, we'll work on making people feel more comfortable with it, but I, I, um, I, I, like I told the teachers this morning, I totally understand the, the need to be flexible, and I totally understand that when you're talking about working with humans, particularly little humans, we're, we're all, we, we're gonna have to figure this out, right, we're, no one's expecting them to be perfect at it right away. Um, I do think we have to do a really good job of making sure everyone is as health, as healthy and safe as possible. So Wyndham's hybrid model has the cohort A attending school on Mondays and Thursdays, and cohort B attending on Tuesdays and Fridays. I've received many questions about why we didn't go AA, BB. And I'm gonna tell you, from all of the conversations and the feedback and the connections with teachers this spring, we know that our kids were incredibly disengaged, a large percenta- percentage of our kids were disengaged. They respond to humans, we didn't have humans to provide for them. We had probably five or six hundred people that didn't have devices, and you know, 'cause you were making copies on the packets. But we, we saw the difference between the kids who were connected to big humans and the kids who weren't. We need our kids to be connected with humans. The West Hartford model, for example, has kids only connected with their teachers in school for one week, then they go a week without their teachers. That is not a model that's gonna work here in Wyndham, it's just not, and we already have the data from the spring. Maybe there's some compromise between the two models we could come up with, but I don't think one district can make a decision for another district. We have a totally different demographic, and we have a ton of kids that were completely checked out this spring. That is the reality, it's a, it's a true story, which is why I think it's important we figure out how to get them back safely into our schools. They are, they haven't been in school for a very long time, March sixteenth was a long time, a long time ago. I already mentioned the piece about, um, synchronous and asynchronous learning, again, the guidelines look for about fifty percent of both, so we're gonna be working on that. We are planning, um, on Wednesdays, there'll be no students on our campus. And I gave the staff members the op- I'm going to be giving the staff members, some of them will be hearing about this for the first time tonight. But I'm gonna give staff members the option to work virtually on Wednesdays. I've already talked to the WFT about it, but I haven't actually put out the information to the other employees. Obviously, that means working virtually if they're able to accomplish their job from home, because there are some jobs in our district that simply can't be done at home. So we'll have to figure that out piece by piece, yes.
Is there gonna be extra support for the teachers in the classroom?
So-
While they're doing both, I mean, they're gonna be trying to teach two different sets of students at the same time.
Right, so I, we've talked to the leaders about trying to figure out how we can assign people to classrooms for that kind of support and how we can utilize the staff we have. It's much easier to do at the elementary level, and even the middle school. The high school becomes really difficult because they don't have the staffing structure to support it, so we're working on it. We're trying to figure it out, but yeah, I can totally see how that would benefit everyone, to make the teacher feel more comfortable and provide the, what the students need, so they feel like they're being heard and, and supported. One of the things that's important for everyone to know is, um, it's, first of all, it's really hard to talk with these masks on. I was gonna put on the face shield, which is another thing we're gonna have to work out when the teachers get here, they're all getting a face shield. But it distorts your voice too, so you, there's like, it's gonna-
Your voice, your voice isn't that distorted.
No, it's just me feeling uncomfortable, yeah, okay.
Have you tried goggles instead of face shield?
Oh, interesting, so-
Doing goggles now.
Goggles, so but, uh, with a mask.
With a mask.
But I was saying, like, when they're teaching all day and the mask is slipping into their mouths as they're teaching, you know, it's a, they, that's, those are nice, okay.
That's why-
Dr. Youngberg, have you tried putting a hole in it?
Yeah, right?
Dr. Youngberg, can you pull the microphone a little bit closer to you, I'm hearing that.
Sure. So, um, one of the things I want everyone at home and everyone here to know is that the, um, virtual learning, whether you're choosing not to come in person or whether you're accessing virtual learning through the hybrid model, is going to look different than it was in the spring. And kids are going to have attendance taken, whether they're sitting in the seats of a classroom or they're accessing learning from home. They're gonna have to be available during school hours. It's a, it's one of the recommendations we're, that we're following, because we know that a lot of the kids in the spring completely checked out from school and didn't necessarily do the things they were, they were supposed to do. Some of our kids, we learned, even took on jobs, which I think is commendable all by itself, but they can't work during the school day moving forward, so. I just want everyone to know that, it's not gonna be what was happening in the spring, we're gonna, it's going to look very different. And again, just at the bottom of the screen, it's just the reminder that the hybrid model is scheduled right now, will start on September first. And it, we're, our goal is to run the hybrid model until October ninth, and then that is the Friday before Columbus Day weekend, Indigenous People Weekend. And then we have Monday off, then the Tuesday is a PD day, and on Wednesday we would return fully in person, assuming the state metrics were, remained positive by then. That is the goal right now. Yes.
Is, um, internet on for everybody, is that not a problem?
So, we have, the district has purchased, uh, jet packs for the households that didn't have wifi, so we are able to get everyone connected. Someone else, okay. So just a few more, um-
Can I just make a, a point that the board members should pull the mics closer to them, 'cause they're way far away, and I'm- They are here, they are hearing? No, they're not, so, all of you need to pull your mics up closer to you on the table so that when you ask your questions, the people who are listening can hear what your questions are. Thank you, go ahead.
So just, okay, thanks, just a little more information about teaching and learning in the hybrid model, hopefully you can hear me now. Um, the district has done a lot of work on the gradual release of responsibility. Um, so the teachers know when we say "I do, we do, you do," they know what that means. We are going to tr- we, our goal was to deliver this synchronous learning through the model they're already accustomed to. And our coaches right now are working on this, uh, on trying to figure out how this, what this would look like in elementary, middle, and high school. And our goal is to roll this out in draft form to the teachers during PD, where they would have the opportunity to help us tweak what we know we haven't tried yet, so we know it's not gonna be perfect, we know we're gonna need their support and their feedback. We are working on creating a set of strategies for synchronous learning, so, like, one example is the webcam we talked about that we had Mr. Weathers practice on, where the webcam is focused on the teacher in the front of the room and on the presentation that's put up on their smartboard. And everyone, both the kids in the classroom and the kids at home, can see the teacher teaching a lesson and walking through their presentation. At the same time that, that teacher is providing checks for understanding to both the kids at home and in the classroom. And I'm not saying this is like, I'm simplifying it, 'cause it's going to take us work to get there, but this is our, this is the vision. Um, and, and after that, once the, once the teachers set the students up to try assignments, to, to try to complete a task on their own, the students could log off, complete the task, and then log back on to get feedback about how they did. We would still be using Google Classroom. Another example of trying to get them connected to teachers in real time would be for the teacher to pre-record a lesson, put it up on Google Meets, and walk the kids through the pre-recorded lesson in real time. So they're in front of the kids on the screen, similar to the way we were in Zoom before we had the issues. Again, as Lisa asked about the classroom supports, um, we are looking to try to find additional bodies and to connect them to classrooms so that the teachers are not feeling all alone. And I, and again, the instructional coaches are working on the, on some of this information right now. And we will have more to share, uh, starting on Tuesday, August twenty-fifth, assuming there are no adjustments made to the calendar. That's when the, we would be rolling out the instructional model to everyone in the district. Um, in a, in a similar process to the way they're going to be asked to roll it out, in that we're going to have people both in person in small groups, 'cause you know we can't exceed certain numbers in rooms, that still hasn't been lifted, by the way. Which is why today, tonight's meeting could have no more than twenty-five people in this space. So we will have people at PD both in person in small groups and accessing virtually.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next slide just goes through some of the topics that we're covering for professional development. Right now, it's scheduled for August twenty-fourth to, to August thirty-first. One of the big changes in PD this year is we are using internal experts, almost predominantly internal experts. We are not hiring people to do PD, because we have enough people who have been highly trained already. Um, we feel like we have exactly who we need to help get the messages out there. We hope it's going to be a collaborative, solutions-minded process that leaves them with some practical strategies that they can walk away with. We plan on covering first and foremost all of the health and safety protocols that staff members have to, uh, follow to keep everyone in the building safe. So that's right after the convocation speech on August twenty-fourth, everyone is going to have a health and safety PD for approximately an hour, and then there'll be follow-ups after that, um, where we go through all of the mitigation strategies so the entire staff understands exactly what it is that's expected of them in terms of health and safety. And then they're going to be able to have time to figure out how do they get that information to their students. Because all of the health and safety things that the adults are expected to do then become routines for classrooms. You've gotta teach the kids how you expect them to function with their mask, wh- when they have to wash their hands, the way they walk in the hallways. All of those things have to be taught to our students to make sure that everyone is safe.
Dr. Youngberg, I have, I have a couple of questions. Uh, will the board members have access to the convocation and that training just-
Well, I hope so, absolutely, um, in fact, I, I think you, are you giving a message, Lynn?
I just recorded my message right before this meeting.
Right, so yes, everyone will get a link to the, to the presentation, um, and we'll record it in case someone can't log on.
Okay, and my-
August twenty-fourth at, it starts at eight-thirty.
And my second question was, so far in the hybrid mo- model, um, I have heard everything is synchronous learning. I haven't heard about the asynchronous.
So, the live teaching that we're talking about using the "I do, we do, you do" lesson structure is the, what we're imagining is that there's a mini lesson provided by the teacher to the students in real time. And then at some point, through checks for understanding and how the lesson progresses, at some point, the students who are at home have the ability to log off, unless of course they need supports and we have the extra bodies available to do it. Um, they would have the ability to log off and then complete their tasks in Google Classroom, which is the digital platform. The same way a kid in the classroom would, when you set your kids off in the classroom to do independent work and they go off and they do their work. It's the same thing, only a student wouldn't be required to stay online to do the independent work. They could log back in at the end of the lesson to figure out how they progressed, to get feedback, to figure out what the next steps were. So, there would also be pre-recorded lessons that they could, potentially the teacher would say to them, "I want you to go on, I want you to finish reading these pages and answer this question," or "Watch this video and answer these questions," I mean, a series of things could happen, but they don't have to, they're not staying on live all day, that is not the model. Hopefully that helps. So some other topics that we're gonna cover in PD are, obviously, social, emotional learning, it's our second priority. We're gonna make sure that we build communities in all of our classrooms. We are re-establishing a district-wide committee, uh, related to diversity, so there'll be some diversity awareness, at least a kickoff to our new focus on that. We're definitely spending a lot of time on the whole instructional model, synchronous and asynchronous learning. There'll be supports for technology, and we have a group of people working right now to try to roll out, uh, some of the support. What we have is a, a very different skillset across the district, we have some real, you know, highly skilled experts, and we have some people that really need the, the basics, so we're gonna try to triage that the way you would in a classroom and differentiate PD based on their needs. Our certified staff members are also gonna be trained in Kronos, Rita, thanks Rita. Um, it's, again, another efficiency in the finance department, it's only gonna take about forty-five minutes or an hour, don't worry, she's promised me it's fast. And our grade five teachers will have ARC training, ARC again is the American Reading Company, and that's the reading program that's been rolled up one year at a time. So they're just some of the basic topics that will be covered.
Um, will there, during professional development, be time for the staff to be familiarized with the ins and outs of the movement around the building, you know, some of the things that were referred to in the comments by Randall prose earlier about-
Absolutely, and, um-
You know, uh, you know, just doing, like, almost like drills over and over again, like an exercise, where you learn how to do these things.
Like the football coach? So I actu- actu- I am absolutely planning on giving them time in their classrooms and their schools, um, so they absolutely could go through all the protocols.
So they could work that out with the, with the principals and other folks in the schools, how, how are we, how are we gonna unload the students from the buses?
That's correct.
How are we gonna move people down to lunch, you know, all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, yes, and I, I, the way we've set up, or the way we're in the process of setting up the calendar, there's gonna be lots of blocks of time that they would be able to work in their, not only alone in their classroom, but in their small, uh, grade level or team groups. So they could definitely work out pieces to what the day might look like. And then I'll just let you know that in, we, as teachers, you always prepare for how things are going to go the first day, and they almost never go exactly as you planned, and I think educators know that. Um, so we're gonna have to be really clear that some of the stuff we, are non-negotiables, right, we're gonna, because we're talking about going to school in a pandemic. But when you introduce a hundred little people, uh, into any situations, you know, there's always the chance that it's not gonna go exactly as planned. So we're gonna be as flexible and as safe as possible. I just want to remind everyone, the next slide shows, um, our region, the districts in the region, so you can see, uh, all of the school systems, Columbia, Mansfield, Lebanon, I go straight down the list, whether they're opening fully in person or hybrid. Uh, so that everyone's aware, this is not just a Wyndham thing, um, Wyndham is following along with many people in the region. We also did the same thing, we grabbed some data about the Alliance District, because Wyndham is an Alliance District. Um, so you can see that many districts are actually opening the, their doors, the beginning of the school year, fully in person. Okay, getting back to the family survey, once again, I'll just, another shameless plug that we need families to fill out the survey that they have access to, um, at home, deadline is Friday. But I put up, uh, the next slide is the July family survey, and July seems like a lifetime ago, and many things have happened since then. But back in July, when we asked the, the families how they were feeling, we got a hundred, uh, I'm sorry, one thousand, three- we got 100, I'm sorry, 1,355 responses, which is a little over half of our households. And at that point, 453 said yes, they were sending their students to school. 318 said no. And 584 of those folks said they were undecided at the time, which is, that's hard data to figure out. About 43% of the, at the time were undecided. And as of, oop, I went the wrong, oh. Okay, here we are. As of, what time? About 5:30 tonight? Okay. As of about 5:30 tonight, this is the date, the current data that we have from the family surveys. We have about 670 families have responded. We need closer to 2,400, just so everyone gets that. And you can see, there's a fair number of people that are opting not to come, not to send their kids to school in person. We're up to 268 of the 670. I, I can't say I'm surprised by that, given all that's happening around the country right now and what's their, what they're seeing on the news. It's not surprising. Yes?
Now, for these, these, this option of not sending their children back to school, is that only until October that they have this choice? Or is it for the whole school year?
They could make the decision to, to access virtually the whole school year. They could potentially do that.
So, you're saying even, even if and when we go back, everybody full-time, parents will have the option to choose the virtual?
We're supposed to, as a district, try to offer that option because we know that until there's a vaccine, there's going to be people who either can't return for health reasons or don't feel comfortable sending their kids. It's an incredibly personal decision that families have to make for themselves. But yes, we're supposed to try to offer that possibility. It's, the survey data is really important for us to get. I still don't know if it's data we can bank on. I don't know if people who fill out the data today are going to feel the same way a week or two from now. It's hard to say. One of the things we are asking, though, is when they commit to being virtual, if they change their mind and they want their students to come to school, we absolutely want their students back, but we need at least, we're asking for five days. We're asking for time to get things set up so that everyone can be safe. So, if they choose virtual and then change their minds and say, I want, I want my kids to go back to school. I feel comfortable now. We need them to be patient with us while we work out how to get them back into the school buildings. A lot of people have been asking this question. So, why aren't we going fully virtual? So, I just put down some of the bullets on this screen, and I'm just going to quickly walk through them. The first and foremost, the biggest reason why we're not opting to go fully virtual is because we were given a directive by the Commissioner of Education and the Governor to open school in person. That is the reason. Right now, I know of two districts, or I shouldn't say two districts, one district and one private school that are opening up fully virtual. That's all I know of. I know of the New Haven, the Board of Ed decision, which I don't know if anyone got to watch televised news briefing yesterday, right? So, you know, you saw the superintendent in New Haven on the hot seat being grilled about the decision that was made. And actually, the superintendent didn't make the decision. And now that the New Haven Public Schools have to justify a series of things, like, for example, they, they talked about their schools, their school buildings possibly not being ready due to ventilation. And so, the State Department of Ed wants to know what they did with all the money they received for the buildings that they had renovated. And they were actually asking the superintendent to justify the money that was spent and how they weren't keeping buildings where they needed to be. So, it was a very interesting news briefing. You can watch it. I'm sure it's taped somewhere. So, I know of New Haven Public Schools.
What you're referring to there is the fact that every school in the city of New Haven, every public school was completely renovated under the, under the, one of the previous mayors.
So, I didn't, I don't know the details, but I know they asked some pretty pointed questions about the use of.
My boss was on the Board of Ed when it happened. Yeah. So, they got a ton of money.
That's what, and that's what the State Department was saying.
And they redid all the schools, unlike our district.
Correct.
But New Haven, if I may, New Haven countered with, we also have a lot of magnet schools. So, students are coming in from all over the place.
Sure.
That's a huge concern for us because there's no way to,
To keep them, sure.
Keep our cohorts together by town even. So, that's a huge concern for them, which Wyndham can actually share because we have students coming into Eastern and UConn. They shop here, they live here, they have off-campus housing. And there was a party in my backyard last night, not my actual backyard, but I back up to Eastern. We could hear kids having a party. So, it's already begun for students who are living in off-campus housing and stuff like that. So, that's a real concern for Wyndham, too, is to make sure that we try and keep our kids as protected as we can while they're coming into our buildings. So, it's a real concern. It wasn't just that they have great ventilation and stuff like that, but it's that they can't control.
I understand. I was just saying.
There's an epidemic in Avon. They can't control that the students don't end up in one of their magnet schools for a reason or something.
I was not implying that it was just because ventilation, but I'm just saying.
She's just giving a plug for Wyndham. We need the cash.
We need more money to upgrade our schools.
Yeah, exactly.
So, the next piece is, the state metrics really says that if, if we're not safe to open schools right now, then I'm not sure when we will be. And I'll show you the next two slides. The State Department of Ed will be sending us weekly metrics so that we can monitor the percent of cases in your county. I'll show you in just a second. I want to remind again, I mentioned that we haven't been in school since March 13th. So, there are some real concerns about some of our students' mental health and feeling incredibly isolated. I also want to just remind everyone that we cannot control the learning environments in students' homes. There's clearly an equity issue here in this district. We already know and have discussed the fact that many of our students were disengaged in the spring, which is another reason why getting them in front of human beings as soon as possible would be great, assuming they can be safe and healthy. And the, another big one from the technology standpoint is we're now at a place where we're going to be able to offer a device to every single student in the district. We have to teach our students, and our teachers for that matter, what that means. So, I think it's important we have some time with them in person to do that. That's a very hard thing to teach completely from a virtual standpoint. But the biggest one, again, is the Governor and the Commissioner of Education have asked us to figure out how to open in person. Here's the first part of the metrics that they sent to us. It, it talks about COVID cases, how many cases you have per 100,000 people in the population. If you're less than 10 cases for 100,000 people, you're considered a low risk. And, and they believe that that's the place you can, you know, where you should be back. They actually think we should be back fully in person. We are currently in the low-risk category. But we're choosing a hybrid, which is actually a recommendation for the next layer, which is when you have between 10 and 25 cases for 100,000 people. And then anything over 25 cases is considered high risk, and they want us to go to remote. So, it is possible at any time in this, along this journey that we're going to end up fully, back to fully remote. That is a very real possibility. I'll go Mary and then Lisa.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just would like to say that these metrics are interesting. But there's an issue of the testing and how up-to-date it is, how comprehensive it is. So, the metric is, is flawed from the beginning for everybody. And I, I am not sure the testing incidence in this area has been where it should be. I know a lot of people, including myself, are getting tested if we're going to be in a, a teaching situation or moving into dorms. And that is, of course, already pushing the incidents up. And so, Mansfield went from 40 cases over the whole entire summer to 58 over one weekend of new people coming and, and being tested. That's almost a 50% increase. So, I'm, I, I mean, the, I know that some people are saying we can't keep deferring and et cetera. But we are right now in a very critical moment of influx of people. The virus does not, pay attention to borders. And I, I do think some of the science is getting put to side, put to the side by people who really are in a rush to reopen and get back to normal. I want to get back to normal. I desperately do. But, so I just want to say, we, these numbers really have to be taken cautiously, and especially August 13th. You know, that's right before everybody moved into town.
That's correct. And we'll get our next metric tomorrow, the 20th, is we'll get them every week on Thursday. So, well, you're right. It could be very different. And, and I completely understand because nobody wants anybody, nobody wants anyone to get sick. I absolutely do not want that to happen in our district. I want to just say that over and over again. It keeps me up at night. You just, everyone needs to know that. Makes me kind of sick to my stomach.
And I, I don't want to be negative nor in any way, and I support.
So, you're going to get closer to your mic.
Can you hear me? Okay. I don't want to be negative. What happens in the event that a staff member or a student does get sick and has been in the classroom? What is the plan?
So, there's a protocol that we've been given, and I actually didn't include it. I just realized I didn't give you that protocol. It just came out. It's, again, something that changes. We, we initially got a protocol, and then we have a new version. But I can send that to you so that you can see what the latest is about what's going to happen. We also have a health and safety manual that we've developed as a district, and the new protocols embedded there so that we can have, make sure everyone's clear on what our response is. Obviously, we were in contact with the Department of Public Health. We notify them, and we figure out with them exactly how that's going to play out. Does the contact tracing and, and, you know, figuring out who goes into quarantine, who doesn't?
I mean, would it be the whole classroom or just those individuals?
It is, it's possible based on a whole series of, of things that we have to go through. But it is possible you could have a whole class quarantine at one time. So, the, the next slide on the state metrics just goes through by county. So, all of the schools.
The thing that's misleading about the county stuff is that if you look at our county, of course, we're like, one of the safest counties in the state, you know. But if you look at Wyndham and the number of cases in Wyndham, it's like, the most by far.
Sure.
So, it's, it's really sort of crazy that the state is making us use county numbers to determine whether or not we're opening. So, I, I'm not, I just, I just think it's a crazy way to do it.
And this is the new metrics that all districts are going to be, they're going to receive every week so that they can help make those decisions about whether or not they're in the right, using the right model to get to their students' needs.
And I think, you know, the thing that this doesn't really convey, and I think we should say this for the public, is that the way that, the way it works is that the superintendent, in consultation with the local Department of Public Health, has some leeway to make decisions.
Well, they've set up some parameters, but yes. Right now, you do have to, you have to do everything in collaboration with the Department of Public Health locally and then at the state level.
Right. How many hundred thousands of people do we have here in Wyndham or Willimantic? If you're calculating these numbers, do we know what our actual number is?
I don't, actually.
Okay. And now going forward, will we have to count Eastern's population?
So, I think that's what Mary was getting at, that the data is going to be very different as.
If they have 100,000 students move in, does that change our numbers? You probably, I'm not directing you, but I'm saying, we should probably figure out if that has to, those cases will count against us. That population should change our numbers, which is a very thought.
I think what they're saying is, right. If you're looking at 100,000 people in the population in a particular area, the number of cases has to fall, you know, less than 10 cases out of 100,000 in the population means you're at low. 10 to 25 means you're at moderate and so on. But I, I agree, just from watching the news, that the college students moving back in town are going to have an impact on how, what's happening in Wyndham County. Absolutely.
And Wyndham County involves about 13 towns in the, in the county. And, and I am really upset about the percent of test positivity because we know how flawed the test is, and people don't get results now seven to 10 days. And it only measures if you have it, not if you have had it. And there's so many horrible things.
And, and the big one is because I've been asked, will the district be doing testing for our students and staff? Not only is it, first of all, it's a personal decision whether or not you're going to allow a child to be tested, right? That's a, that's a family's decision. It costs about $120 per person to be tested. Per test. And that's just it. You could be negative on Monday and positive on Tuesday. So, we'd have to continually test you. And it's about $400,000 to test all of our students and staff just one time. So, we could spend millions in testing that we don't have, so.
No, your insurance gets charged.
Yeah.
Your insurance covers it.
But it's free if your insurance doesn't cover it.
Right. If the state of Connecticut, it's free.
Mr. Proz asked, for those of you who couldn't hear him at home, if it's free at the hospital and if you have insurance, your insurance, your insurance will be charged.
Gets charged the $120.
The state pays for it.
But to the person, it's free. There's no cost to the person.
Right. There's no cost to the person. But if we instituted.
If the school system were to offer it, though, we'd have to pay for it because we wouldn't be able to say.
It's just like if you have an employer that's just, that has to test you all. They're paying for it, not the state. Right now, the state is paying for it.
I just, I put on, in our, in your presentation, the current school day start and end times because there were some questions about potentially shortening the school day. I know Mr. Weathers was working hard on the calculations to figure out whether Wyndham could make any further adjustments. And Neil, I put up your screen. I don't know if you want to speak to it or if you just want me to go through your notes. But I know that he had some concerns. You coming for the microphone? Yeah, I'll let you. Go that way.
Where'd it go? Okay. Can everyone hear me? Okay. I'll just, I can talk from here.
Why don't you say who you are in case people can't see you?
In case you do not know who I am, I am Neil Weathers, Assistant Superintendent. And when, we took two examples on that slide for shortening the, potential of shortening the school day because there was a question that was asked. So, when we first looked and we took about a half hour off, what we did is we looked at the required time. So, is everybody, well, everybody may not know. Normally, we have a requirement of 180 days. And there's two levels of instructional hours. At the K to 8 level, that's why I used the elementary example, there is 900 instructional hours required. And then, actually, and I realized, in our response, when we were talking to WFT, WFT, I didn't really put in the high school requirement, which is slightly different. For each high school course, there is 120 hours required for a Carnegie unit, which some of you may be familiar with. So, in order to achieve that, you would need X number of periods. So, what I did with a couple of other staff members, we did this today again, but we did this a while back. We went through the number of, of what we think will be the number of early dismissal days because when you have an early dismissal day, you have to take that instructional time off. Normally, in a 180-day cycle, you're okay. So, they gave us a waiver to go from 180 school days to 177, but they have not reduced the requirement of the number of hours required. So, so, and again, some districts that go to school normally 85 days and lopped off even five or, they're, they're in a slightly better, if they have 178, 179 days, they have 13, 14 more hours to play with. And this also doesn't take into account, our number is kind of close, just so everybody knows. If we, for some reason, would, you know, came back in person because there was a vaccine and we then had early dismissals, it could reduce the, the hours. So, we're, we're trying to work with it. And there's some stuff in how you set up the schedule, but we, we have looked at this. And I know that this might be part of our conversations with the WFT, but we wanted to just share the calculations because you know that's a question that people have shared. And we're, and, and I'm open to staff that wants to discuss it further because I'm open, I'm just open to the discussion.
Thanks, Neil.
I, I found that sort of confusing, so.
It is confusing. So, essentially, when.
The short answer is.
We don't think we have the ability to shorten our day more than maybe a couple of minutes because we would be running into, to a place where the state would say we didn't meet our instructional hours requirement. Because of, how many days?
Unless we extended the number of days.
Correct. So, I mean, we have to do 177. If you want to add to the school year, that's an option. I don't know if that's going to be a favorable option. that's an option, but I don't know if that's gonna be a favorable option.
Option, right?
Right. That would, that would be another discussion. But yeah, if you had more school days to play with, you could reduce the, the hours you come to school, which is what some of the other districts have the ability to do.
Are other districts getting waivers from the state?
So what we were told is that we're being held to a hundred and seventy-seven days and nine hundred hours. That I haven't heard anything different. I even went back and looked because one of the members we were talking to said that it was that way, but I have not found anything that says that we have, we've been given the waiver.
The students who are at home virtually learning and logging in for fifteen minutes and then logging back off to do a mini lesson, how do those hours calculate?
So they're, the students who are only virtual are gonna have more than just the fifteen min, the, just the mini lessons and the check back in because they're not gonna be in school. So they're gonna have a different, a slightly different structure, additional supports.
Okay.
Any other quote, Mark?
Not, not to the hours, but I don't see any mention here of, of our fall sports programs.
So right-
I have some real concerns about if we're doing an A B, A B schedule, and yet I might bring the kids back five days a week for practice. Certainly not socially distanced in the locker room, certainly not socially distanced on the field. Have we given thought to just canceling the fall sports season?
So right now, they're on hold anyway. They're not, they're not starting, they're, the focus-
I know the CICA decided to go, didn't decide to get the-
The Department of Public Health on board before then.
They seem to have gone against everybody's recommendation anyway. But that doesn't mean we have to, there's nothing that just says that I can't postpone or cancel the fall sports season because of the, just the logistics. I'm only bringing the kids back two days a week for education.
Right.
See how I can justify bringing them back five days a week for fall practice.
So I had, well, we canceled middle school sports, and I explained to the board why I felt like that was the best decision. I, I was under the impression that we were gonna try to get fall sports going, assuming that it was approved. I, I don't think if you, if the children don't come to school, who choose fully virtual, should have access to, to the sports if, I mean, that's a tough decision to make, but it's sort of, if you, if you're uncomfortable with the idea of coming in person, I think you would should be equally as uncomfortable as being part of a fall, of the fall sports. It's a discussion we can have if the board wants to weigh in. If they, if they indeed decide to have a fall season, if the board wants to weigh in on whether or not we participate, I'm, I'm welcome to hear that. It's sort of a mixed bag from, in the region. There are some that are saying that they don't wanna have their kids participate in fall sports, and others that are saying they will. So we can have the discussion. Right now, it's on hold, so it-
Okay, I, I don't know, I don't know how the rest of the court feels. I, I certainly feel it's worth a discussion. Again, if I'm gonna only bring them back two days a week for education.
Right.
And yet I wanna bring them back five days a week, and I'm gonna put them in a packed locker room, shared showers.
Well, they, they actually have a pretty clear plan about how they're gonna try to keep them safe, but I agree, the big concern for me when you read the plan is the transportation piece and getting them to and from things. And then, of course, some of the sports just naturally have contact with each other, so I can see why the Department of Public Health might be concerned. Sure.
Okay, well, let's, let's, we can go back and have discussion about that, Mark. Um, let's finish the, the presentation, yeah.
I think it's important to have that discussion.
So the, the next slide is the facilities update, and we are, it is correct that we are in the middle of a, of the district-wide ventilation inspection by Colliers, and it should have been done several weeks ago. That is, that is the truth. I am hoping that the results of the inspection show us that, what we already know, and that is that we have older buildings, that we hope we can get to a place that are efficiently running so that the air quality in the building is safe for all the humans, big and little. Um, today, they completed the Natchogues inspection, which was the school I was most worried about. As you all know, it's the oldest school in the district. Um, it also had, it also has in some of the classrooms very noisy blowers that I, you know, fans in the ceiling. Um, and actually, the WFT showed me on Monday, and they turned it up all the way, and it's really difficult to hear in that classroom, absolutely true. I was not aware of the, of the need for them to be on because I had done probably at least fifty observations in the classrooms in Natchogues School, and had never been in a classroom when the, when the fans were actually on. So I was kinda confused as to why they would need to be on now. It sounds like, and I don't know if Dawn, if you wanna join in, feel free, but it sounds like they, what the Colliers gentleman said to me today about the fans in the ceiling at Natchogues was that they do not need to be on full force. If they'd like to put them on, they can keep them on a low setting, which would reduce the noise, which is good from an instructional standpoint. He was very happy because the, uh, the building has very large windows. That obviously helps with ventilation. Um, and there was actually, in the classroom we were in when I met with the WFT, we had a box fan in the window blowing air out, which is the way the guidelines say it's supposed to be set up. So we know we have some motors to replace. Uh, at Natchogues, we were aware of that before the inspection, and today, I guess there's some iss, there's some issues with correcting the bathroom exhaust. And Dawn, you can talk about the facilities part of that, but, um, so we got relatively good news from Natchogues with some things that need to be repaired, and we're already working on it. You wanna join in, or does she have a microphone?
Uh, yeah, so, um, we found two sets of restrooms that, um, the exhaust wasn't working in the restrooms, um, that my guys will take a look at. Um, pertaining to the, the big units that you were referring to, the EVRs, um, Frank from Colliers mentioned that during the hybrid mode, it's not full capacity, so you don't have to turn those on all the way up. So you could turn it half if you only have half capacity. They are loud. Um, there's about ten classrooms that the motors do not work in those. Uh, the motors are antiquated. Um, we've been looking for motors, um, that will fit, but because they're so old, it's, it's hard to find one. We found one last month, but unfortunately, it didn't work because it didn't fit. We finally found a company, um, we got the motor, um, this afternoon, and the first thing tomorrow morning, we're gonna stick it in and see if it works. Um, fingers crossed it will, and then we would need to install nine more.
And, oh, Mary has a question?
He could finish and-
Oh, go ahead, that's fine.
Well, um, the first question is, this, uh, these engineering studies are being paid for by the state, is that correct?
Nope. The district is paying for all of them.
Well, through what? Our, our budget that we approved with barely any kind of increase?
Um, I actually, we wrote, we wrote repairs, facility repairs, as, you know, to reach compliance into our CARES Act money, so it's part of that budget. But you're right, Mary, we would not have money to do any of this because we got a three point two million dollar deficit in what we needed to operate in 2021. You're absolutely right.
I mean, that's the equity issue, really, that's kind of, um, you know, the elephant.
Sure.
Because I do think it's, it's very, it's great that that, the state puts that front and center in every document, um, you know, a doc reopening, and equity is so important. And yet, we have buildings that have, that should have had these renovations to heating and HVAC, uh, for the health and safety of the students and staff years and years ago, and this town constantly defers everything till it is falling apart or not working properly, and then when we're in a dire emergency like right now, you know, are, are things really, so I do think we really have to continue to push this equity with both the state and the town, and perhaps the town has to be forced to pay for these issues because it's the buildings.
It is true that our district has far more of the, of the repairs that we're gonna uncover or that we already knew about, but didn't necessarily have the money to fix. That is true. What's interesting is, in the letter that's linked to the Adapt Achieve, Advanced Achieve Guidance, it actually says, um, the guidance provides act, uh, actions schools should take to ensure that their ventilation systems are performing optimally. The goal is not for schools to invest in costly upgrades and add-ons to existing mechanical systems. Rather, schools should understand what their current mechanical systems are capable of and how they can adjust the function of those systems to optimize their capabilities. So they're not actually telling us we have to invest the money. They want us to understand what we have. We actually already have a pretty good understanding of our HVAC issues in the district. We know we have issues. So we're gonna get the study completed, um, so that we can prove to everyone that, that the air quality, we hope, is going to, you know, come back with positive information about the air moving in the, in the buildings because we want everybody to be safe. But we're already aware that our buildings have not been taken care of for a number of years.
Right.
No one's gonna argue with that, right?
Dr. Youngberg, just to kinda dovetail on that, um, webcams in the classrooms, smart boards, all those kind of technology things that we have to add on, that, you know, I'm sure we didn't have a webcam for every classroom and stuff like that as of March sixteenth. What kind of expense is that? And I was on a Cabe discussion the other day with some of the people that I knew, and, um, there's a backlog of getting some of this technology, and how are we gonna be able to address that?
It is true. I think we're still waiting on about a hundred, a hundred and twenty, something like that, webcams to be delivered to us. Um, you're right. We, again, that's another CARES Act, um, budget item, the technology. And, and we did receive a large donation from the state, so I wanna say thank you to the State Department of Ed. Um, they sent six hun, more than six hundred new, brand-new laptops that our high school students are going to have. Um, but we did have to purchase the other items that we need to get to that one-to-one device access. Um, but again, CARES Act money because we don't have it in our budget to pay for any of these things.
And how does the backlog impact teachers and buildings not being able to do?
It is true that, right now, if the, if the order doesn't come in the next few days, um, we're gonna have a difficult time having a webcam ready to go in every classroom. That's true.
So there goes the synchronous learning.
Right.
Right, and, and I know that, because across the entire state and actually probably nationally, people are looking for all the same things to get these things up and running, so that, it's the reason why there's backlogs on, on so many things, so, yeah. We would need a different plan for the classrooms that didn't end up with them. I'm still fingers crossed that they're gonna come in. I know that the IT department's working hard to get them installed, so hopefully, they, they show up. But yes, that they are, there are some that are, we're still waiting on. So just moving down, the facilities updates, um, the facilities department has a whole lot of things to do as it relates to meeting the guidelines. Um, oh, I forgot to talk about the fact that they did get into a portion of the high school today, and the mechanics of the high school are fully operational, which is good to hear, but we're currently locked out of the, is it the digital system, Dawn? The, okay.
Yeah, the trend system.
Okay. What does that mean?
The trend, the trend system is the, um, it's on a computer that allows us to, um, check to see if, um, if the mechanics are working. Um, there's an issue with that, um, because we have to upgrade the system, the software, which costs money. Um, I'm waiting for that quote to come in. Uh, so if there's any cha, like, if there's any changes that we need to make, like time settings, currently, uh, my guys cannot do that. We have to call our vendor that we use, and they could change it for us. Um, and the trend system did go down, um, when we had that power outage. It went down, as in, we couldn't see it, like, when you go on the website, because of IP address, when you go on the site, you couldn't see anything. However, B and G did tell us that, um, it was fully functional. So everything, you know, everything that worked was still working. It didn't, like, the entire system didn't shut down.
But we obviously need to be able to get back in there so that we can make the adjustments we need to make.
And it's functional, but we can't use it?
We can't adjust it.
Or is the computer, or we can't adjust it?
Right, so we're working on that.
We can't adjust it ourselves at the moment until we get that software upgrade.
And can we get that before school starts?
I'm waiting for a quote.
Yes, we're, we're gonna do the best we can to get it taken care of.
Okay.
Yes.
So, yeah, so what's Plan B in case that these systems are not in place?
Plan B in, in terms of?
But, you know, the opening day?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's sort of what the teachers are saying, that they're, they're saying that maybe we need to push back the opening of schools so that we can make sure all these things are done.
That could be Plan B.
How, how soon do we have to let parents?
Well, that's the whole thing. I don't know how that decision is gonna go over with the, with the families. Um, but, you know, I'm giving you the most up-to-date information. We have things that are not done yet. Um, we're working really hard. We're scrambling as fast as we can, um, to get them done, but-
Well, that's the whole purpose of this meeting.
Right.
We can, we can try to get all these things on the table, and we can think about what makes sense. So we're not gonna take action tonight, but certainly, we can have plenty of discussion about what the possibilities could be. I, I'm, this is gonna be a long meeting, folks.
So the rest of the things, uh, on the screen are all the, um, items that we're working hard on the facility side to make sure that, um, we're ready to go and everyone is, uh, healthy and safe. Obviously, we put in large orders for hand sanitizer and extra soap and extra paper towels and disinfectant and spray bottles and large garbage cans and all the things to try to make all the operational decisions that, that the guidelines have forced us to make, um, so that we can make sure everyone can come back and, and hopefully not get sick.
Dr. Youngberg, does that include extra masks for kids who don't have them and teachers?
So we placed several orders for PPE, um, and we've been lucky enough to receive donations from the town of Wyndham. Um, so yes, we have about forty-three thousand masks, um, and, and extra PPE for the staff members who are going to be involved with students, you know, in a more in-depth way. Any other questions? All right, IT updates. I've already mentioned the fact that we're at a place where we can have one-to-one devices, pre-K to twelve, all of our students. That's a, a result of purchases that we're making through CARES Act money and the donations from the state. Um, our IT department has to roll out fifteen hundred new devices. That's the six hundred plus new laptops for the high school students, and, um, a number of Chromebooks that are getting us to that place where we, we can reach the one-to-one access. Our goal is to give the most up-to-date laptops, the donation to the high school kids, and then the newest Chromebooks to our middle school kids, and then work our way back down with the pre-K students getting the, the oldest of our units because we're hoping that they rely on them the least in terms of, of their learning. We talked a little bit about the webcam installation, um, and there are still some backordered, as I mentioned. Um, the high school and the middle school teachers are actually going to have laptops that they didn't have before, so that's a, another big, um, push in the IT department. Uh, we have a plan to roll out new devices. Right now, it's scheduled for August twenty-seventh. Uh, a, a plan to get those new devices into the hands of our students so that they can be charged before the first day of school. They can get them home and be ready to, to actually access, uh, learning. And by the way, if the webcams aren't installed, um, if they don't come in and they aren't installed, we still have access to teachers live through Google Meets. That hasn't changed. So there is a camera on, right now, we, well, we saw what happened today. And by the way, um, Officer, Officer Rivera let me know that they are investigating, um, the issue that happened with Zoom. They're taking care of it. They'll fill us in tomorrow. So it's good to hear. Nice to know we're being protected, right? Um, we are gonna need to teach our students how to take these devices back and forth to school. Not only is that necessary for the hybrid model for the few weeks we'll be in hybrid, it's also necessary if we end up in a full shutdown. Um, the students have to know what it, how to use the technology and how to take care of it. And we are still working out the details of the charging dilemma. You can see some of the power strips that are going on in here. Because remember, the kids-
They're gonna blow up all the building.
It's, I know, it's, it's possible, but the kids aren't gonna be putting their, well, laptops have a different charging set than the Chromebooks, but they're not gonna be putting all their Chromebooks together in the big charging stations anymore because then you'd be touching everyone else's stuff. So they need to charge them individually if, if they're not charged at home. So there's a whole series of things that we have to get used to. There's some updates from the Human Resources Department. Um, four percent of the certified staff members completed HR paperwork related to returning to work. Fourteen of about three hundred forty-two, um, in WFT. Five percent of our non-certified staff members, the WFP, WFEP, completed HR paperwork. Six out of a hundred nineteen. Um, we won't go into a lot of detail. Obviously, that's personal information, but I'm just letting you know that, um, those are the percentages. And I also wanna let you know that we have eighteen new employees who are, we, we are virtually welcoming on August twenty-first. We were gonna do a full, uh, try to do some kind of full virtual orientation, but we, what we decided to do, because we have so many PD days before the kids are scheduled to come, that we'd welcome them on Friday and then provide their orientation during the week of PD. So we're hoping to connect with them, but, um, it's always exciting to bring new people on board. Transportation updates. Um, again, we are reiterating, if a parent has the ability to bring their kids to school, we would encourage you to do that if that's what you're, you know, comfortable with. Um, the discussion earlier about the buses being so tight that the student couldn't bring their, their trombone or trumpet, whatever the instrument was, is absolutely true. Um, some of our buses are upwards of seventy students. What I asked M and J to do was to cap our bus capacity at fifty, which means we're paying for additional buses because of those twenty-five kids from each of the buses where they were in the seventies becomes a new bus run. The hybrid model will actually cut that number close to in half. Um, it's kinda hard to do the bus, to know the bus capacity entirely because we're grouping them based on, as I told you, the high school kids and their households and working our way down. Um, so we don't necessarily know the neighborhoods and how that's gonna work. But any areas that we know where the bus capacity is normally high, we've talked to M and J about putting additional buses on so that we can keep the bus numbers as low as possible. Um, the State Department of Ed is asking us to consider the bus, the group of kids who travel on the bus, another cohort. So we're working with M and J to make sure that the kids that travel in the morning are the same kids that travel in the afternoon. It's not the easiest thing to do with all the different bus runs that are connected, but we're working on it. Um, bus drivers will have additional masks for the students. Students shouldn't get on the bus without a mask, and that's gonna have to be a message we deliver to the families. Um, again, a mask is one of the mitigation strategies that we think is going to help keep us safe, so we wanna make sure everyone is in one. Um, the, uh, buses will be wiped down between runs, and the school system is actually providing the bus company with the same cleaning products that we're using in the classrooms. Um, students will load the bus from back to front and, and, and come out in the opposite direction so that they're not crossing paths with each other, um, on the bus. Again, it's another way to keep them from, from being in close contact. Um, and we still need, as a district, to negotiate with the bus companies for the few weeks we're in the hybrid model because obviously, there's no transportation for the students on Wednesdays, and we're currently being charged for five days of transportation, so. Although, I guess the tech schools that we run out of, a, across the state, uh, will be transporting kids on Wednesdays, but our Wyndham students won't be on campus. So we're, I'm working on, uh, negotiating that contract, so we're not charged for the full time. And the non-certified staff members who had their hours reduced as a result of the adjustments we made to the school day are hopefully going to become our bus monitors. We're gonna offer them a few different opportunities to make up the hours they lost, you know, different jobs that they could take on so that they have no cut in pay. We don't, we're trying to leave, you know, everyone harmless. Um, so bus monitoring is something that they could do for us to make back the money they might have lost as, as the school day was reduced.
Dr. Youngberg-
I meet with them on Friday.
Have we heard from the bus company that they have a shortage of drivers because of all this? Parents or people that are unwilling to drive because of risk factors, concerns, that kind of thing?
Um, Lisa did tell me that she was concerned that it could happen, but she hasn't specifically told me they don't have coverage for runs. I imagine we're gonna have that conversation soon, um, because that's another place. If the bus company doesn't have, and actually, one of the, the superintendents was saying the other day in our, in our weekly Zoom the same thing, that we could all do everything exactly right and then the bus company doesn't have the drivers. They need to actually get us to school and we're in a totally different position, so it is something that we're all worried about. Cause we, it's hard to control it. I can keep you updated on that.
Dr. Youngberg?
Yeah.
It, uh, and this is for all of us in the board, um, it seems to me that the, um, cost of keeping everybody safe is keep mounting up and mounting up, and we're gonna run out of that three million dollars pretty soon. And, um.
We only got one point four nine million.
One point four nine, I'm sorry.
Right.
And, um, two things, um, I, I personally not gonna call anything that the state gives us or the town of Wyndham a donation because it's their responsibility, so it should be like a given.
Okay.
One, that's one. And number two, I, uh, encourage, uh, all the board members to still send a letter to the governor saying that we, you know, that the, all these needs to be funded by the town and, and, and the state. I mean, this is, we cannot, how are we providing the sanitation for the buses and paying for that?
So that only, that's only gonna cost us a couple thousand dollars. We've sorta done a little bit of estimations, cause I don't know how much they're actually gonna spray on the bus seats, I'm just estimating, but.
It's just an example that, you know, that.
Sure. So we did get word.
We're expecting to do, uh, a lot with little, and we need to say, no, this is the government's responsibility to fund us.
So the CARES Act money, we got word that they approved the, well, we have a couple things we're working on, but they have, they're giving, we're getting that money for the CARES Act, the one point four million dollars. We also heard in the last news briefing with the commissioner that there's additional monies coming to all the districts to cover the, what we estimated it was gonna cost us to reopen. I haven't heard how much that is. They weren't even clear about how they were doing the calculations. Um, but we should be hearing more about that. They just mentioned that on, this would've been Monday, no, Tuesday, yesterday. Every day is just sort of blended together for me, but I, it was yesterday. So the next, um, couple slides are the Food Service Department. So in all this, we still have to make sure all the kids eat, whether they're in person or at home. Um, so these slides, these bullets come from Eric Roll in Food Services. We purchased barcode cur- barred, I'm so sorry, barcode readers so that the kids can take their, a badge and swipe it without having to touch the keypad. We don't want them touching things, so we, we purchased the little readers and everyone will have a lanyard and a, and some kinda badge so that we have a, a less, you know, less to touch, less to disinfect. Um, breakfast will be completely grab and go, literally grab and go. Um, lunch will be served from two different lunch, uh, serving lines, um, with hot meal and grab and go options. Um, I, I think you're all following along, but.
Yeah, yeah. I don't think you need to read through all the bullets.
Okay, great. So you can see the differences, and obviously, he's always following all the Department of Public Health guidelines, just like the school system. Um, then he just goes through the sanitation, how they're gonna keep everyone clean. He talks a little bit about how, um, they're gonna distribute meals on the days that students aren't on campus, as well as how they're going to make sure that meals are offered for the students who are accessing virtually. So there is a plan in place on how to continue to feed them. And it's just a graphic that goes through all the things that he has to, um, keep in mind with the Food Service Department staying open. People Services, um, they're, they continue to collaborate on trying to make the delivery model fit into the hybrid model, not the easiest thing to do when you have students with special needs, so they're working on that. They also received Addendum Six, which is specific to special education, so they're still trying to figure that out. That came out, I think, last week, but it's pretty, it's a pretty dense document, about twelve or thirteen pages worth of really meaty stuff that has to be interpreted and then you have to fit it into your own plan. Um, they're still working on updating handbooks for specialized programs and making sure that everything is uh, aligned to, you know, what COVID-nineteen wants us to remember. We are continually, as a district, trying to figure out how to, um, not only continue the programs they've started, but to figure out how to bring alternative programming back in the district, so it's a conversation we're having constantly because, as I've mentioned to the board, we're looking for ways to save tuition money um, and outplacement costs so that we have money to do the kinds of things in the district that really need to be done. Um, and, uh, one thing that the People Services Department, uh, the school nurses, along with the support from Suzanne Crowe, was to create this health and safety manual that all the staff members and families will receive. Um, we did the final edits today, so I think it's ready to go out. It'll go out digitally to everyone so that they can go through and see all the pieces of staying health, uh, safe and healthy. And last but not, not least, um, on the major updates is just Project Aware and Social Emotional Learning. One of the important pieces here is we've purchased an online, um, assessment tool that's supposed to help us figure out if our students are struggling from an emotional standpoint. It's like a quick little one-minute check-in that red flags students who are really struggling so that we're able to triage and give them what they need from a social-emotional standpoint. So we did make those purchases. Uh, so we're gonna train staff on how to administer that quick little assessment so that we know when the kids return to us, how they're doing and, and what they need. Questions, feedback, discussion points?
And they're all over. Tracey and then Mary.
Um, I think that this is a Herculean effort that you have undertaken, and I don't envy you. And we've had conversations about how I worry about students going back into the classroom and family that's at home. A good number of our students are multi-generational at home or being cared for by a grandparent or an older adult who's in the risk category or who's immunocompromised or something like that. Um, a couple questions that I have come up with myself. What is the consequence for a student who refuses to wear a mask? And I understand that different levels have different, you know, reasonableness of consequences, but what if Andrew came to school and said, you know what, I'm not wearing a mask, pros, like it or not, you can't make.
Right, so, so first, masks are required for all students, right? Um, you can have, you can provide medical documentation that says you, you don't have to be in a mask. That is possible. That's, right, so there are gonna be students who aren't in masks because they provided us with medical documentation not to be in a mask. If they're not wearing a mask, we are gonna offer them a face shield because we feel like everyone's gonna want the protection of having something that stops whatever's coming out of your mouth from being on someone else. Our very first goal with kids that refuse to wear a mask is obviously to educate them as to why they need to keep the mask on, why it's important. The next step is to make sure you contact their families and educate their families as to why they need to have the mask on. If they continue to refuse, and we, I don't know, I, I, I'm assuming that no one's gonna be comfortable giving them a whole lot of chances on this because it's people's health and safety. They're gonna have to access learning from home if they won't wear a mask and they don't have medical documentation that says otherwise. There's no other way for me to guarantee the community is gonna be safe if we're taking away one of the biggest mitig- mitigation strategies. So, that's gonna be the message that's delivered after we've talked to the student and educated them and the family. If they refuse to do it, they're gonna have to just access from home, and we'll have that ability to do that, so.
I'd, I'd like to encourage that to be strictly enforced for everybody's sake. Um, you know, different things in different buildings get enforced with different capacities, and, and I know that depending on the age group and the child and special needs and everything else, there's a lot to take into account of that. But people's lives are, are really at risk here, and I think that it's something that if they're not going to wear it, and you know, I can imagine some of our high school students and probably some of our middle school students purposely coughing on someone or, you know, playing the cootie game.
Don't give them any ideas, Trace.
I know, I know, but we all know it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
The other thing is, is, and you alluded to something you could share with us later, is what happens if a student or a classroom or teacher goes home, gets exposed, comes in, doesn't know it, gets symptoms, is asymptomatic, but mom was, you know, positive or something like that? How are we gonna deal with that? Because I don't think that we're gonna have, we already have a problem getting subs. I don't think we're gonna have people rushing to come and be subs, which means we either have to double up kids in classrooms, which is dangerous, or figure out another way to kind of.
I will send you what the, the latest document from the state and the health and safety manual so you can see exactly what it is we're being asked to do. I do wanna remind everyone that we're often, we're told when we get these documents that they may change based on whatever the latest information is, so it's, it's what I have now, and I will send it to you so that you can all take a look at it. There is a, there's a protocol and a series of things that hap- that has to happen, questions that have to be asked and quarantines that have to be issued and all that, so it's pretty laid out.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have another question, Tracey?
Nope, that was it for right now. Thank you.
Mary?
Yeah, um, I mean, I'm also, you know, impressed and, and somewhat, you know, overwhelmed by all of the, uh, planning and, and all of the changes we've had to make um, as a society and, of course, as a school district. Um, I, I just can't imagine how, um, the staff, uh, the administrators who, you know, you're, you're short-staffed anyway, the teachers, the custodial, uh, and facilities. Th- this summer, all of this work, I mean, how are we doing it? Because we are like at a kinda skeleton or minimum level, and I, I feel like it's so, so overwhelming, and, um, and I, I'm worried. I mean, are people working overtime? Are there support staff? And are we able to hire? I mean, also, just for the online learning, the teachers need it. These cleaning, uh, constant cleaning, um, and, and maintenance of vents and, you know, everything that, that we are absolutely having to address. Um, so, you know, what can we do? We, we need to advocate, I think.
We are, yeah, we, you, you, thank you for acknowledging the fact that we've been hit pretty hard budget-wise. We are a skeleton crew in many places and working really hard, um, behind the scenes to try to get things done. We're, we're trying really hard to make sure we have as many substitutes and oper- options um, through Kelly Services and Delta T for the certified staff. We're working on substitute custodians or people who will come in and clean for us and disinfect and things like that. So we are, we are aware that, um, we're gonna, we're probably gonna, going to need help. Um, again, I, we don't know how long we're gonna be open for, right? Everyone keeps saying that when flu season comes, we won't be open anyway, so it, it's hard to predict how this is gonna play out, but we, we're aware that we need help in cer- in certain areas, so we're saying just do what you need to do to get it done.
Um, do you have anyone? Uh, Ilda and then Katina, and I don't wanna forget what Mark put on the table, uh, um, but go ahead, Ilda.
So, um, I too commend you guys. Is my mic on? Is my, okay. Um, I commend you for all the work that you did in putting this together. That has to be, uh, that's a lot of time. And like Mary said, like Ms. Galucci said, um, with the budget that we've, we've had, we've had minimal. Um, and it's gonna be hard to make all this work. Um, and I, as a former parent, um, a gr- a graduate parent, I can't imagine having to make this choice to send my child to school or not. And even just sitting here, I can't even decide. I can't, yeah, see, it didn't sound like it. I can't even, um, imagine making that choice, so, you know, I, I respect whatever choice people make for their children and their families, and, um, I think like Ms. Lambert said, um, there's a lot of grandparents taking care of their kids with compromised immune systems, just in general. Um, that's just our, our community also.
Sure.
Um, but without babbling, um, this has been a really very informative night, to say the least. Um, there's a lot of information that we've, we've had, and there's a lot of maybes. So, the one thing that, um, that I, the question that I have is when will we know? How soon will we know if we're gonna push back the day, the date, the start date from the first to the eighth?
So, changing the school calendar is actually a board decision. It's not one that I can make. I can, I'm giving you the update, but it's a board decision, and tonight's, I guess, not a meeting where you can actually make that decision, but.
Well, we can talk about it.
You can talk about it, right.
We can talk about it. We can consider it, and we could, as I said at the beginning of this meeting, uh, after discussing with Dr. Youngberg, uh, Janet put, uh, a, a meeting on the calendar for tomorrow night cause, you know, we have to give proper notice. So there is a Zoom meeting on the calendar for tomorrow night, so if at tonight's discussion we decide we wanted to take action, we could do that. Um, so, we're not gonna entertain any motions tonight, but if people wanted to talk about postponing the opening day and putting a date on that, that's a board decision that needs to be made, as Dr. Youngberg pointed out. So, I think we should continue to discuss though and hear, cause people are absorbing a lot of information, and we can come back to that.
And as information changes every day, it's, it's, it's hard.
It literally changes every day.
We might come up with the eighth and then have to change it again.
Or the decision could be taken out of our hands.
It could be made for us. That's also a possibility.
So.
That's also a possibility, for sure.
Uh, I think, uh, Katina, who was it? Heather, hand up next?
I, um, I agree with all the statements that have been done, and thank you, and thank you to the Federation of Teachers and meetings and all that you have done, all the staff. I'm really concerned also about the socio-emotional stability and health of the staff and the administrators. I mean, I, I, um, being a teacher myself and on campus, I cannot even begin to understand how any of us are making any of these decisions as parents, as teachers, as administrators. And I would like to know, um, what are the plans? Or have you thought of, um, what kind of support will teachers and staff have and administrators have uh, for people who are suffering, suffering in vivo, uh, with anxiety and depression?
Sure.
And any, you know, god forbid, somebody dies.
I think everyone right now is experiencing some level of anxiety, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Um, we have actually had conversations about trying to offer, um, some self-care opportunities for our staff. Um, we did a virtual self-care when everyone was locked down in the spring, so I'm hoping that we, we've talked about trying to offer something similar, you know, some ways for the s- for the teachers to feel, um, to have opportunities to take care of themselves, take care of each other. Uh, we are, we're well aware that everyone is feeling anxious, um, and a bit overwhelmed, and they're being asked to do something that they haven't had to do before, uh, under circumstances that no one's experienced before who's still alive right now, so, um, completely aware of that. And you have to sort of balance that with, you can't have your staff completely overwhelmed and feeling anxious and expect them to take care of the little people who are also probably feeling pretty overwhelmed and anxious, so it, it's a, it's a tough call. I, I, you know, I think we just need to do the best we can. I don't, I, I don't know how to exactly answer the question. I, I mean, it's important to me that we take care of everybody.
Thank you. This is all uncharted territory, so we're all, you know, can, I think it's good that we keep bringing up these issues though, so.
Absolutely.
I, Dr. Youngberg knows that we're thinking about these things, so. Um, does anybody else wanna bring anything up? Paula?
I had, um, I don't know if I'm on.
It should be towards you. Just pull it tw-.
Ah, I did.
She did.
As a matter of fact, I'm sorry, I'm not very good at this stuff. Okay, is that on?
Just talk closely to it.
Okay. Um, I had a question from, uh, a parent who's trying to make the decision as to what they're going to do. Uh, this is a child who's starting school, kindergarten, and this is a working mom. Wondering if the curriculum mu- if the child must be logged on to the active programming or is there a way that the parent can somehow manage the curriculum when, um, through their working hours?
So, we're going to try to record as many things as we can because we understand that, first of all, not only might there be issues with scheduling, even though we really want kids to be available during school hours, I mean, that's ultimately our goal. Um, we also understand that students may not get something the first time around, so just doing it live and not recording it stops you from being able to show it again to someone else who might see it, need to see it more than once, so we are gonna try to record as many things as we can. Um, I don't know how much they need to work around their schedule. Um, I just, I just know that the teachers have an, you know, the biggest impact on students, so we wanna put them in front of students as often as possible.
As her supervisor, I'm going to try and help them to accommodate it all, as best I can.
Oh, I see, oh, I see. Got it, okay.
Mark, did you wanna bring anythi- you, you brought up the issue about, uh, sports. Do you wanna return to that discussion?
Well, I just think it's, it's an important discussion to have. We, we, I don't think we ignore that whole aspect of the fall sports here at the high school. I, again, it's, I, I, not that I wouldn't want to have them, but it's, it's the logic of bringing kids back only two days for education and five days for sports, and certainly, uh, and I know we have the coach here, but certainly football is not going to be a socially-distanced sport that's gonna be able to play safely with face masks and packing them all in the locker room and packing them all on buses to take them around. I, I'm a little skeptical of CICA. I think they have a whole different motivation, obviously. They're, they just wanna get the, the games on. I, I don't, I'm not saying they don't care about the children, but they're seen to be obviously more concerned about the games than they are about the, the kids and the staff, so. And it's, we can't ignore that. We have to, we have to come up with an affirmative or yes or no, I think, to the sports, one way or the other. It's just as important to the school system as it is the education. We have to.
So we add that to tomorrow night's discussion to action?
I think we have to, I mean, we can certainly measure the, the interest in, of the, of the board on the topic.
I don't think it's gonna.
Can you refresh us as to what the actual fall sports are?
Right, well, right now, they put the fu- right now, we're on hold. We're waiting for the Department of Public Health is supposed to meet with the CIAC to determine how they might alter their plan. We're waiting for the Department of Public Health is supposed to meet with the CIAC to determine how they might alter their plan or change their plan, so that the Department of Public Health feels comfortable with the plan. So you know more? Okay, Randall knows more.
Well, okay.
Well, there you go.
They're making an announcement tomorrow, okay.
So from there, we'll go from.
Um, but, but just list the sports.
Uh, fall sports, so football, cross-country, soccer, volleyball.
Field hockey?
Yeah, that's field hockey one, no, that's spring.
No swimming.
Soccer?
Soccer.
Cross-country.
Indoor track?
Cross-country.
Don't they still have indoor track in the fall?
In the winter.
Winter.
Or winter?
I don't see why we would decide now.
Well, I think we need to see what CIAC says tomorrow.
Yeah, we should wait for the next announcement.
Right. Well, here an announcement tomorrow.
Taylor, our decision according to that.
But right now you are saying that if a fall sport was happening.
Well, we let them start the training that they, you know, in the summer, and Randall's actually part of that, thinking that we'd be prepared if we were going to have fall sports. So that's the direction we were headed in, but they put it on hold.
But what I'm saying is, it's not about that. If fall sports are happening, you raised the issue earlier on that a student who decides to go to virtual learning.
That, yeah, and that's a regional decision.
Should not be allowed to play a sport.
Most of the superintendents in the region have made a similar decision in that, well, there's some logistical things too around that. So if you're home accessing learning, you have to get to campus to become part of the sports teams. But it, it sounds like it's a pretty common decision that if you're accessing only virtually and not coming to campus, that you wouldn't participate in fall sports, if there are fall sports. And I can get you the data on the districts that have done, that have made that decision, if, if you'd like it.
Is that, is that written in the policy?
No, it's a, it's a decision that districts are making, I don't think there's a policy about it.
Jaime? Talk, talk closer to the mic, please.
Just maybe, a student who decides to come virtual classroom, he may play sports, you know? He may help and do well in the academics and he may be motivated. So I think we should look closely or more carefully into it because just making a general decision for it may not be the wisest part of it. I mean, I would really like to revisit and see who is the student, what are the motivations? Because if the student is doing well in a, in the virtual mode, why not play sports? There may be many reasons why the student has chosen to be in a virtual mode.
Okay.
What do people think? Anybody have any different opinion about that?
Well, I have another question too, if I may.
I wanted to know whether anybody had any opinion about that, that.
Oh, okay.
Then you can ask your next question.
That's okay.
Well, I, I'm not advocating, I'm not advocating yes or no at this particular point, but advocating that we get the information. So if she, if Tracy can provide us with the information, if Coach can provide us with how they're going to do some sort of social distancing or whether we should have virtual, I, I, what they say, we should make that decision next week at our next meeting or whatever, doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be tomorrow. But I would like some information on it so that we can, we can make an informed decision on it. I think it has to be a decision that we should make.
Yeah, I see, before we get to your next question, can, can we, I see Randall has a response to some of that, but you need a mic, you need a mic. Where, I don't know where it is. Oh, here.
I can speak to some of the safety protocols for fall sports. We've been doing football conditioning the entire summer and we have daily check-ins. The parents have to sign that they have no symptoms, I take their temperature, they wear their masks, they've been working out in specific cohorts together, only eight to 10 kids. They don't get to go with the others. Even when sports start, we only bring five kids in at a time in the locker room to change and then the other kids have to leave. So there's a whole list of safety protocols. Probably need two buses for a football game instead of one for social distancing. There's a lot, there's masks on the sideline for coaches, masks for officials. They put a lot of thought into making it as safe as possible. Does that mean football's still not, it's still a contact sport, I understand what you're saying. But there are protocols and you could access that on the CIAC site, the entire list of when we're allowed to practice together, when the cohorts, you know, are allowed to, to work together. But there are a lot of, there has been a lot of thought put into that. And we've been practicing three days a week, or not practicing, but conditioning outside all summer. And, and the kids have been very compliant, they wear their masks, they, they come in with their daily things, if they don't have them, we send them home. And so it's been working pretty good, but we have not been in a locker room yet, we have not been in a weight room, we have not been in spaces that aren't ventilated. So we've been outside. And a lot of the reasons some student may choose to go virtual but play sports, it's a lot safer, you feel a lot safer when you're outside. I mean, there's a lot, you're not breathing the same air, it's just a whole different feeling when you're outdoors.
Thank you.
Thanks for. I just have a comment.
Oh, hi, on this topic?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I think as a parent, especially high school, I think it was, high school is different because a lot of our kids need that scholarship, need the sports scholarship to get into colleges. So they would need to participate in the sports. But I think the middle school and the elementary schools, I think if the kid, if the child or student does not come to school, they only do the virtual, their parents may not even want them to participate in sports. So, I don't know, I guess we could cross that bridge when we get to it.
But we're not doing sports in the middle school.
No, not at all, just high school?
Not in the fall, we're hoping that we can bring it back in the spring.
Oh, that's right, you said they took it away.
We're not doing it, we're not doing it in the fall.
All right, so.
Jaime?
Okay, I'm going to say one, say one more point to the previous question. I, I believe that academics should be the major driver for allowing a student to play sports or not. That would be my, my position, my belief. Then my question, my other question is, one of the proposals that I read, you know, from the union was the shortening days. But did I hear correctly that you said, you said that that was impossible because of the amount of hours?
I, I'm confused by the question.
It's the question not related to sports, it's the question about shortening of the school days like they're doing.
Oh, what I said is, close to impossible is reducing our school day further than it's already been reduced if we want to meet the required hours for, that the State Department of Ed requires. Yep.
Thank you.
So I'd like to, like, test the will, I mean, are there other points that people want to bring up? I'd like to test the interest of the board about having a special meeting tomorrow night to take action on things. It could be postponing the opening day from August first, I mean, September first to another date. That's the, like, the one thing that really is within our purview as a board. And we can discuss it, we just can't take action tonight. But do people have an interest in having that discussion and possibly taking action on that? Yes, Mary?
Well, I, I think it's kind of urgent, just in the sense of, you know, do we have the engineering reports, are these motors coming? I, I would be more comfortable if we, I, at this point, if we had the time. But I realize that a lot has gone into the September one start. So I, I just would like to know, is, is, I'm not saying we are indefinitely postponing the opening, which some people fear. Just, will we be in a better place even if we just have seven more days? We have a few more, like, reports for the tests that are currently being taken, and, as students and, and people come into the area. You know, and, and we get the webcams hooked up. So it doesn't sound like a lot, but I don't want to mess up some things that have already made.
So you, you wouldn't be messing anything up. It is true that not having the results of that inspection is going to make people feel very uncomfortable. If we could have the results of that inspection, that's the, it's the biggest thing. The webcams, as much as we want them in place, we know we have other options from an instructional standpoint, that can still work. But having the, the report, the inspection note, you know, from each of our buildings is a really important piece. And if that's going to make the staff feel more comfortable about returning, then it probably should be considered.
Go ahead, Paula.
And if that's the case, again, we have parents that have to prepare.
Right, it creates a whole ripple effect in the community, right? Because there are people who are waiting to go back to work and they were going back as a result of their kids going, starting school. And even though the hybrid I know is a really difficult thing to work with your work schedule, we are still trying to figure out potential for childcare. That is something else the district's working on, trying to potentially use the St. Mary-St. Joseph's building. Lots of unknowns, but we're working, we're trying to see if there's something we could offer our employees and potentially families in the community to have sort of a satellite school so that they could go to work while their kids weren't necessarily, you know, in-person schooling. So we're working on that as well.
Where would the money come for that?
Well, we would have to charge some kind of parent fees to help offset the costs some, but, you know, I don't know what's worse, knowing that your employees can't come because they can't cover their, you know what I'm saying, you're going to pay for substitutes, you're, it, it's going to come out in the wash, I think.
Uh, Katina, you had a, your hand up?
And so when, when are we expecting the reports, please?
So they started today, um, and they're, they, I hope to have them all done by next week, I mean, that's the goal. The inspections of each of our buildings. They already sent some notes to us today, so.
So it doesn't, to me right now, it doesn't make sense meeting tomorrow if the, if the results are not in, you know what I mean? I'm, I'm, I'm.
Well, I mean, the only thing I was thinking, just in response to that, Katina, is that for planning purposes, for the, for the staff and for the parents to know sooner rather than later, if we're pushing it back to say September eighth, is probably better than telling them next Wednesday when they'd be coming to school the following Tuesday. That's less than a week's notice, that's all.
You're right.
That's just a consideration, if we decided we wanted to do that.
Can we make a decision today?
No, because we don't have an action item on the agenda.
You don't have an action item.
Right, we'd, we'd have to vote tomorrow night.
I think we should.
Consider that?
I think so, yes.
To, to what?
To do it tomorrow then, take action tomorrow.
Uh, Lisa?
When we get the report back, we still don't know what we might have to do.
That's true, and I, I guess, it is true, we, we, it's all unknown. I, I'm hoping, because in, in my mind, and I don't know if this is just wishful thinking, but in my mind, Natchog was our biggest issue. And I feel like we already have a plan to remedy that, so I'm hoping that none of the other buildings come out in worse shape than Natchog. That's sort of my thinking. But you're right, we could get the report and then we could have to make a decision about whether or not we're going to do some of the recommendations that they make, right? Remember what the document says, they're trying to put us in a position where we understand our ventilation system and how to maximize its efficiency.
But do we want to make the choice ahead of time and be prepared for it, or do we want to wait until we have the results and have to do it?
And have less time to let the staff and the, yeah. I mean, the bus company, yeah, everything, there's, there's like a whole ripple effect.
If you made the decision tomorrow night, I need to let everybody, it would set a series of things in motion that I have to make sure every, it's communicated to everyone.
So we have Tracy up and then Ilda?
Um, well, if we found something out, we'd have to, to fix.
Well, not necessarily, depends what it is, right?
We have to try to make it as appropriate as possible, um, within our, our, we also have staff coming to the building, they, I mean.
We have staff who've been working the entire time, right?
Our, but we're going to have more staff in the building because they start next Tuesday, next Wednesday? When are they in the building?
Monday.
Monday, okay, I didn't know that, sorry.
Yeah.
So Monday, we have staff in the building and while we've had staff in the building all summer, there's been a few here and a few there. We're going to have staff in the building come Monday, in all of our buildings. And that's adding to the load of, you know, ventilation and stuff like that. So as, as concerned as I am about our students, and they're always my first priority, there are still adults who could be in the building and then get sick and then not be able to open school anyways, so maybe this is something I know we can make a motion today.
So you're, you're suggesting we push back the whole school year, including the adult PD?
Possibly some of the adult PD, I mean, if we're going to have, you know, if all of us were here every day and only you had been here all summer, well, you were fine because it was just you. But now we've got a hundred times as many people or ten times as many people or whatever, any of whom could be sick and could be transmitting it to each other. So it's just something that we need to think about before a decision's made tomorrow night, that's all. And I don't know what that kind of a different load, and I'm not trying to, you know, subvert anything, but we don't know what that kind of a load could mean. And it could be nothing or it could mean something. So it's just something, as we're making this decision, we need to take into account, if we don't have teachers, we can open the school all we want to if they're all sick and don't have anything to do with the kids then, so.
The facilities documentation in the guidelines really suggests, obviously you want, you want air, you want air moving in your buildings, right? Everyone wants air moving, preferably out, right? We want the air to be moving and flowing around.
Maybe we can't have fans blowing at people.
It actually says though, that the, the idea that the virus is transmitted as a result of your ventilation system is very small. Like, it literally says that in the guidelines, that the other mitigating strategies are the ones that they really want to make sure we're taking care of, washing your hands all the time, wearing your mask, staying socially distant. It literally says those exact things, that ventilation is low on your list, but I completely understand why it might make people nervous.
Do we have good ventilation in this room right now?
I have no idea. I have no idea, I don't know if there's good ventilation in the office I've been working in since March sixteenth, either, right, Rita? We have no windows, we have no, we don't know, we have no idea. We're not sick, that's all I can tell you, we haven't gotten sick, knock on wood.
So, so we have an option tomorrow night to take action if we wanted to on delaying the school year, opening, the day of opening and potentially delaying professional development along with that?
So I'm going to meet with the WFT tomorrow so we can talk about potential, right, so then we'll come to the meeting with some, with some options.
Well, yeah, you guys are meeting tomorrow, so you could inform that discussion.
One other thing, if we're adding action items tomorrow, depending on what CIAC decides, our board policy five-one-one-four-point-two says that attendance day of game, players must attend school on the day of the game unless special permission from the coach and/or athletic director and/or principal has been issued. Violation of this rule will prohibit players' participation in the athletic contest that day. So it's just something we need to think about, we can suspend the rule, there's, there's no reason we can't. I just want to make sure all of our ducks are in a row. And, you know, I, I am torn between students, you know, being together and students not being together for athletic events as well. But if we're going to do that, that's something we'd have to suspend as an action item.
Thank you for bringing that up, thank you.
I don't know if there are others, this is just the first one I was able to find.
Right. So we, so what, we, if we're changing those kinds of things, we would have to look at the policies that we have on track already and suspend them.
Well, you can't add an addendum to it?
Yeah, or just do a, like a COVID waiver.
Although attending school at this moment is defined as hybrid, right, or online.
Oh, that's true, oh, that's true.
So as long as the kid has been attending online, they are attending school.
As long, but then there's a possibility that they're being, you know, homeschooled or they're just doing it all virtually. So we have to make sure that they're logging in, that they're doing what they're supposed to do, that their students have been standing. And I think as a board, we should still keep that C average as a requirement, absolutely.
As Jaime said, the academics is important, yeah.
So I, I think, I think we should put it.
Ilda and then Mark, go ahead, Ilda.
I think we should put it on the agenda for tomorrow, the start date, because we need to give people more time. Because it's less than two weeks, the first is less than two weeks.
I think it was supposed to come in on Monday, so that's two days.
Okay, so we, we would, we would have some time to mull this over in our heads, right? We would also be indicating right now to the superintendent that we are interested in possibly doing this and give her a chance to give us information about what she thinks is the best option. She will also be meeting with the teachers tomorrow, the union tomorrow, to talk about things more. So we may have more information from WFT and you tomorrow.
I was scheduled to meet with the non-certified union WFEP on Friday, so maybe I'll see if I can also meet with them tomorrow before the meeting. Their impact, they're fairly large bargaining unit as well. Their impact, they're fairly large bargaining unit as well.
So we could take action tomorrow night on opening, yeah, but.
Janet was saying they're hearing that people can't hear at home because we're not talking into our microphones.
They could, they could, we could take action tomorrow night at seven PM on our Zoom meeting around adjusting the opening date. And that could relate to just the school, the classes and/or professional development, right? Um, because the other option is to open school later and still have professional development start earlier and have them have it for longer so they can do more of the things they were talking about. So I think, you know, we'd like to hear from you, you and the union tomorrow about that, bef, you know, if we can, to inform our decision. And we'll hear from CIAC tomorrow about what they're saying about fall sports, and there may be some action we want to take on that. Mark, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I, essentially I was going to, I, I agree with, uh, with, with, uh, the comment that we just need to make a decision. We, we have to get off this, the limbo of one way or the other, so everyone knows what we're going to do. So I, I, I'm in agreement that tomorrow we need to make a decision one way or the other. I'm not sure which way yet, but we do need to just stop leaving it out there as a possibility that we may do it, so I, I agree with that.
So, is there anything else that we need to talk about tonight?
I think when Dr. Youngberg talks to all the parties tomorrow, when we know what CIAC said, you can make a recommendation to us as what you think is best, and, you know, we can take it or we can change it around as we think is best for our community.
Jaime just asked me, thank you, Tracy, that's a good point, um, Jaime just asked me. So we're confirming, we are meeting tomorrow at seven PM. The meeting is already posted, so we are in compliance with all the notice rules. And it's a Zoom meeting only, not an in-person meeting, okay? And the ol- and the only item on the agenda will be, you know, public comment and discussion and possible action on uh, school reopening. I don't even think we need to say the technical, it, it already has it on the agenda. The agenda's been posted, right? Yeah.
We have no issues with Zooms.
Yeah, we just decided to have it a vague discussion and possible action, so we could put multiple things on if we needed to, okay?
That's what happens when you leave the meeting open? That doesn't sound right.
So, uh, are we going to, and, and the next thing on the agenda, if, if we're done with that, is public comment. Is there any public comment that anybody in this room wants to, like, any of the public in this room want to make? Yeah, could you use a, could you use a mic, please? And identify yourself again, just so people know who they're hearing from?
No, I'm doing it for your sake. Um, my name is Kami Nyland-Poyer, um, member of the WFT, um, executive board. I just had a question regarding the busing, um, and you had said that due the, due to the hybrid in-person model, that would, that would definitely lower the numbers. Is there a, a number, like, less than twenty-five per bus that we're thinking?
Well, we do think that some of our buses are going to be right around the fifty percent mark, but there's certain places where that's not going to be the case. They won't exceed fifty, which is still about twenty-five less than a lot of our buses we're running before. Um, and again, if we find an area that has a lot of kids, we're going to have M and J at a bus. It's just, we're going to do whatever we need to do to make people feel comfortable getting their kids to school that way.
Well, I'm just thinking, we couldn't meet more than twenty-five in here, and this is way bigger than any bus I've ever been on. So I'm just thinking, the bus should be capped at something, I don't know, like, I just wanted to know that because any decision we make for our kids impacts us as teachers and staff, so that was just something I wanted to put out there, okay?
I'm still surprised about the twenty-five in, in-person meeting. I don't understand how that can be in place and you can open schools at the same time. It doesn't make any sense, but it's surprising for sure.
I don't think they were thinking of situations like this when they were thinking of the twenty-five indoors.
Yeah.
Um, so any other.
It's sixteen in here right now.
I mean, we're not supposed to go back and forth in public comment, but we can, you can talk, we can talk more about that offline, okay? Uh, anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we close.
Meeting adjourned at nine fifty-seven.